I now call the Huntsville City Council meeting to order. If all of you would like to and are able to, please rise for the invocation by Pastor Jason Parks, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Chair.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for this city and all that you're doing here. God, thank you for our elected officials. And God, we pray that you would pour out your wisdom and your grace on them. Thank you, God, for all of the employees of the city of Huntsville and everything they do each and every day. God, to make this place a great place to live and work. Father, thank you for the men and women who serve, who protect, who keep us healthy and keep us safe. God, protect them as they do their work. God, tonight, I pray the same blessing that Aaron prayed over your people. God, for our community, may the Lord bless you and protect you. May the Lord shine his face upon you and be gracious to you. May the Lord show you his favor and give you his peace. I ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you Pastor Parks. The minutes from the July 23 meeting have been received and they'll stand approved if there's no objections. We're now at a resolution of special recognitions. Mayor, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I'm going to change orders a little bit on these. I'd like to ask that the Green Mountain, the Varnado's and the Green Mountain Fire and Rescue Group, the Volunteer Fire Rescue Group, if y'all would please come forward, please. All right. If you'll turn around and look this way because you've got to be on camera. We've got you on TV here. Good. We have a special resolution tonight, fully signed by the Council. And Mr. Chairman, do you want to go ahead and pass the resolution before I give it out?
Be glad to. We have a resolution commending Bill and Louise Varnado for their service to the Green Mountain Volunteer Fire Department. The Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Mayor Battle.
Thank you, Council. We had an initial vote down here, so it was more than unanimous.
Recorded six oh.
Six oh, please. Now, I want to read this resolution. It's very special. The other day up at Green Mountain, we talked to the Varnado's and got to give them a resolution. And this one's, this one's pretty neat. Whereas Bill Varnado and his wife Louise moved to Green Mountain in 1957, at that time there were no paved roads, no running water, and only eight families. So y'all were some of the early pioneers. Whereas Bill and Louise were the first members of the Huntsville Volunteer Fire Department Rookie School, which consisted of 240 classrooms, classroom hours of training. And whereas in 1964, he incorporated the Green Mountain Volunteer Fire Department. And whereas Bill holds Alabama Volunteer Firefighter Certificate Number One, and his wife Louise holds Certificate Number Two, I would have given you number one and then given him number two. And whereas in 1975, he helped to construct the first Green Mountain Volunteer Fire Station where he served as chief for 30 years and senior safety officers of past 20 years. And whereas he is a co-founder of the Madison County Association of Volunteer Firefighters and Services Treasurer. And whereas Bill was instrumental in the founding of Madison County Volunteer Fire Department Association and the Madison County Three Mill Tax for Fire Service. And whereas Louise Varnado has been a firefighter EMT on Green Mountain the entire time with her husband and has helped him with his many accomplishments. Whereas Bill and Louise will be retiring from the Green Mountain Volunteer Fire Department after 50 years. Their service and leadership to the residents of Green Mountain have been exemplary and worthy of notice. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of the city of, and the City Council of the city of Huntsville wishes to commend and express appreciation to Bill and Louise Varnado for their loyal and dedicated service. And it's signed by myself, Mark Russell, City Council President, Bill Kling, President Pro Tem, Richard Showers Senior, District One Jenny Robinson, and Will Culver. And we want to say thank you for all the years of service. We also proclaimed, was it Wednesday, as Bill and Louise Varnado Day. And we want to say thank you for all your service to this community for a great 50 years.
I think you did.
You think we got it all? And you voted. You did a very good job. And Bill was a War II vet and also was Legion recipient, Legion of Honor recipient?
Oh, yeah.
The French Legion of Honor recipient. Yeah, Legion of Honor recipient. So thank you for your service, sir. Thank y'all very much. I heard you. We'd like to, at this time, invite Jim Daniels and Steve Ivey, our Director of Parks and Recreation. Jim serves as Chairman of the Tennis Center Board and like to invite them up. And I think they're going to invite some special guests up who have a presentation for us. Jim?
Yeah, I'll make it. Thank you. Yeah, I'm Jim Daniel, the President of Huntsville Tennis Center Board of Directors. With me tonight, I have Sally Warden. She's President of the Huntsville Area Tennis Association. And Jock Simmons, who is the Director of the Tennis Center. Our tennis center is 10 years old and we are 100% utilized. We have over 1,500 active players in each of four seasons a year. We, this last year, over the last 12 months, we had over 40,000 sign-ins. So we are a very busy tennis center. To respond to this continued growth and our popularity for being a good place to run tennis tournaments for the state and the Southern section, we're right in the center of the Southern section. Hatta and Tennis Center have combined together to run a finance campaign over the last, since March. Our objective is to add 16 additional clay courts to our 30 courts that we currently have, which 24 are currently clay. That will make us the largest clay court facility in the Southern section. That should also allow us to bring in over $2 million of economic benefit to the city each year. So tonight, we'd like to provide a check to the city for $200,000. The tennis community has donated so far to this expansion program. In addition, Phil Riddick, Chairman of District Five, County Commissioner, has donated $10,000 that he has added, provided directly to the city. So, thank you.
Jim, thank you. Now, a lot of you don't realize, but in these kind of building, buildings that we do or expansions of facilities and everything else, usually we ask, we ask the facilities or the supporters of the facilities to raise half the money and then we'll put up half the money. And so this is a part of their down payment on putting up their, their half of the money because they've been out working hard raising money. Sally's been twisting arms and it's worked out real well. Now, I guess the question is, Steve Ivey, do you have your half?
I'm working on it.
Okay. He's working on it. I believe it's in the 10-year capital plan, but I want to say thank y'all and thank you for the partnership. It's a great partnership. It's a great facility and it provides a lot of opportunity, not only for people in Huntsville, but from all, all over Madison County. So thank y'all very much, Jim. Jock, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If y'all would shake the Council's hand because they like to shake people's hands who bring them $200,000.
Thank you so much.
You know how that is, right?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Sally, thanks for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for what you guys are doing. It's great out there.
Thanks for all your work.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Jock, thank you.
All right. And we do have one more. If I could ask Chief Louis Morris to come up and Mr. Terry Hatfield to come up, please. If y'all would come up. I hope you knew that you would not get away unscathed. They were, there were many, many different ways. And Mr. Hatfield, how are you leaving tonight?
Well, I'm going to leave in the car, but I've got the motorcycle ready for me.
Okay. We have, we have two proclamations here. One for Terry and one for Chief Morris. And many of you, many of you have read in the paper, but if you haven't read in the paper, Terry Hatfield is finally retiring after, we begged him to stay for many, many times. He's finally retiring because Ms. Hatfield told him that he would. And after 39 years of service to the city of Huntsville. And it's been a great 39 years. He's served the city as, he's served as administrative, administrative assistant to the mayor. He's served in Human Resources. He and I were in college together and we've just, we've had a great 39 years. And to Terry Hatfield, I want to say thank you for a great 39 years. You've made a difference in this city. You've made the city a better place and you can still change your mind if you want to. But thank you very much. And in conjunction with that, we have a proclamation that will name Tuesday, September 1st, which will be the first day of his, his retirement as Terry L. Hatfield Day in the city of Huntsville. Congratulations. The Council wants to shake your hand. Chief Louis Morris, Chief of our Police Force, who after 39 years of service will also be leaving the city of Huntsville, will be retiring. We're going to miss Louis, too. Louis has been a stalwart in the Police Department, starting off from the very bottom, going all the way to the very top. And he has been just exemplary. He has been one of those people that you could count on every time that you needed to count on somebody. He's done a great job for us. And Louis will retire badge number one after 40 years with the Huntsville Police Department. And he looks forward to spending time caring for his parents and enjoying retirement with his wife, children, and grandchildren. And I don't blame you for that. I want to say thank you for a great 39, 40 years of service. And we also have a proclamation here on September 2nd, the second day of September, which will be the second day of your retirement, we are naming it Chief Louis Morris Day because I'm not sure you wanted to have the same day and have to share it with Mr. Hatfield here. So congratulations. Mr. President, we have some actions that have to take place because we are losing some valuable, valuable members of our community, which have been City of Huntsville Department heads. But we will take that up when we get to comments and a little bit later in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up is a resolution congratulating Terry Hatfield on his retirement from the city of Huntsville after 39 years of dedicated service.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. Showers. Second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Dr. Showers.
Mr. President, I was prepared to read this resolution acknowledging Terry Hatfield's 39 years. Since the mayor has already done that, I'm just going to ask him to come back and we would just give him the resolution from the Council acknowledging his 39 years of dedicated service to the city of Huntsville.
Okay, Mr. Hatfield, if you'll come back. Thank you. One more trip up there.
Now, we're going to do a little bit different. Most of you know Terry Hatfield. He was here when I came here, almost 27 years ago. And the mayor came in, Mayor Battle, and had the vision to appoint him to a department head position. And at the time, Mayor Battle, that was a significant move. Marial, in that particular arena, but Terry Hatfield came in with a caring spirit. And the men and women down there got on board and they've been on board. And I just want to say on behalf of the Council and the mayor, how much we appreciate what you've done in that department, the time you've been down there. And I saw men who didn't want to come to work. Will got to a point where they wanted to come to work and stay all day. And guess what? He wasn't at his desk. He was right there with them. And so Terry, before you go back to your seat, would you say something?
Well, I just appreciate you here.
I just appreciate the time I've been with the city. It's been great.
Next on the agenda is a resolution congratulating Second Chance Deliverance and Restoration Ministries on 10 Years of Kingdom Service to be held August 22, 2015 at Union Chapel Missionary Baptist Church.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers. Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Dr. Showers.
Mr. President, I would simply just say tonight that I will be presenting this resolution on August 22 at the Union Chapel Missionary Baptist Church on behalf of the Second Chance Deliverance and Restoration Ministries.
Thank you. B is a resolution congratulating Reverend Willie Hinton on his 25th Pastorial Anniversary to be held August 23, 2015 at West Maston Lake Baptist Church.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers. Second by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Dr. Showers.
Again, Mr. President, I will, on behalf of the mayor and the Council, present this resolution on August 23 for Reverend Pastor Willie Hinton's 25th Pastorial Anniversary.
Thank you, sir. C is a resolution acknowledging Robin Givens on her appearance at the Phillips CME Church 150th Anniversary Gala to be held August 21, 2015 at the Jackson Center.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers. Second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Mr. Culver. Would you like to say anything?
No, sir.
Okay. D is a resolution acknowledging Eric Taylor on his performance at the Phillips CME Church 150th Anniversary Gala to be held August 21, 2015 at the Jackson Center.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers. Second was by Mr. Kling, or Mr. Culver. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Under announcements tonight, 14 A, B, and E, the administration has asked that we consider those by unanimous consent. Mayor Battle also plans to take those out of order at his time when he speaks. We have some Boy Scouts with us in the audience. Would one of you Scouts want to go to the microphone and tell us what troop you're with and what badge you're working on? I need a volunteer. Yeah, go to the microphone, please. Tell us your name and what troop you're with.
I'm Brian McWilliams and we are with Troop 361.
And Brian, what badge are you working on?
Citizenship in the Community.
Great. Glad you're here. If we can help you any way, please come see us after the meeting.
Brian, did, did Mr. Diamond, did he give you a good, a good synopsis of what to expect here in Council, with City Council? Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Kling.
I don't know if Chief Morris is still in the room or within listening range, but I'd like to invite him to come to the next council meeting and that the City Council would present a resolution in a small way expressing our appreciation of his great work over the last 39 years.
All right. We're now at Byron Thomas. Byron, you have a presentation from the Human Resources Department? This is concerning an agenda item tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilmembers, tonight, what I'd like to do is talk about our Position Classification Audit Process. As you know, on the Council Agenda tonight are some positions that were audited by Human Resources using the same process that we always use to evaluate positions that may need to be reclassified for its grade and/or title. Also, what I'd like to do is talk about the process in relationship to that, as well as address what has been brought up here is the classification of firefighters and fire driver engineers. So that would be in our presentation as well. As you know, Human Resources conducts position classification audits for positions throughout the city of Huntsville. Those requests for position classification audits come only two ways. One, either the employee can initiate that request through the department head, or the department head can initiate that request as well. The reason that audits are requested, mainly the employee may believe that their position classification is wrong or that maybe it has changed. Or also, the employee might be assigned new duties that suggest that the position classification is not correct. With that being said, in order to review that, Human Resources receives completed job information questionnaires and all the necessary information pertaining to that position. Then what we do, once we receive that information, HR, Human Resources will meet with the employee or employees, their supervisors, all the way up to the department head. And then, once we've done that, HR evaluates the position classification based upon certain classification system factors. Those factors in totality deals with the job knowledge that is required for the position, purpose and scope of the work, internal, external contacts, physical effort that might be involved in a job, supervisor authority that might be exercised, as well as job complexity, work environments, work controls, and job hazards. All of those are looked at in entirety in evaluation of the position. Then, once we do that, HR submits the recommended changes, like we're doing tonight, like we always done, to the City Council for their approval. If there are no changes to a position classification as a result of the audit, then the employee is notified by Human Resources with a letter and that audit process is then closed. Just as a little analysis, the last three years, Human Resources has conducted audits on about 107 different positions. As you can see, 59.8% of those resulted in a grade change. And with it resulting in a grade change, like we've done tonight and done in the past, we will submit those items to the City Council for your approval. And you can see that 41.2% resulted in no grade change. As we already said, as a note, Item 14C, on tonight's Council Agenda recommends changes to salary grade classification and/or title, job title, for multiple positions resulting from the same audit process. With regards to the request that was given to Human Resources to audit the firefighters and the fire drivers, I want to walk through that process because it's the same process, but I want to outline it and give you some dates and timeframes with regards, with regards to that process. Human Resources received a request to conduct position classification audits for fire drivers and firefighters on February 20, 2015, as directed by the mayor. Around that same time, on the 20th, we sent the necessary information, the job information questionnaires, to the department, to the employees in that department, fire drivers and firefighters. The employee job information questionnaires and other pertinent information were then submitted to the Fire and Rescue Chief on about April 20, 2015, for his review and to sign off on those. And then, those job information questionnaires and any other pertinent information pertaining to the job was submitted to Human Resources on June 8, 2015. Once we received those information, the job information questionnaires, Human Resources scheduled meetings with the employees and their supervisors to conduct a position classification audit, like we do with any other process. Just for your information, some meeting timelines, once we initiated that process, on July 10, 2015, HR staff, member of the HR staff, met with about six firefighters. And we also set up meetings with about five fire driver engineers. Those firefighters, as well as the fire driver engineers, were from varying station, fire stations, as well as different levels or years of experience. That was coordinated with the fire chief and the district chief, excuse me, the deputy chief in regards to the individuals. On July 24, 2015, at the meeting with the firefighters and the fire drivers, HR staff member met with about three fire captains, as well as four fire district chiefs. And those, again, were varying experience and also different stations. And then, finally, we concluded the audit process by, for its meeting, that is, meeting on July 29 with the Fire and Rescue Chief, as well as the deputy chief. Once we concluded those audits, Human Resources conducted the audits of other firefighters and fire driver engineer positions using the same process that we always do. And that, as it indicated, that process was conducted fairly and according to our policy. Therefore, it led to the Council action that we have on the agenda tonight for introduction. With regards to the firefighter position as a result of the audit, we did determine, or it was found that there were some new duties, but it was not significant enough to justify any type of reclassification. We did find that there was an increased number of medical calls that they're responding to, but the medical calls were addressed in the 2007 Position Classification Audit that upgraded the firefighters to a grade 13, their current grade. With regards to the fire driver engineers, of course, they have to take on the same duty as the firefighters, but there were no other position changed to justify any increase or change in their position classification. But as a reminder, they were also audited in 2007 and they were reclassified to a grade 14. So as a result of the audit that was requested by Human Resources, and that was done inconsistently with the practices and the policy that we have in place, the firefighter, our firefighter position is properly classified at a grade 13 and the fire driver engineer was deemed properly classified at a grade 14.
Mr. President, we, we ask that we could bring this forward because in two weeks, we're going to bring forward a budget. And that budget has to reflect what, what, what we have as payroll personnel and what we're, what our requirements are to be paid. And so, we brought this forward. We had asked Human Resources to have this by the first meeting in, in August, and they did. They brought it to us right a couple of days ago. And we wanted to make sure that we got this out to the Council members so that they would understand that per our process and per the policy of the city of Huntsville, which is a policy that has been put in place by each of the Council members, that per that policy that, that we will not be including a, an upgrade in classification for the firefighters in this, in this next budget. We, we firmly feel that this, the process is a good process to follow. I mean, it's not a politicized process or anything else. It's, it is done through our Human Resources Office. We did not know the answer, what was going to, what the answer was going to be until we talked two or three days ago to Mr. Thomas, but that's the way it should be done. And if any of those parties feel aggrieved and feel like they, they should have a higher ranking, they are welcome to come back through the process in, in, in a while. But I will tell you, we wanted to bring this before you, before we bring you the budget in two weeks so that we could get this through, through our process. We had promised you an answer on this and we felt like- through, through our process. We had promised you an answer on this, and we felt like we owed you that answer.
Council members, other questions for the administration? Mr. Culver.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, and Byron, I'm sure your department did a, a thorough job, as always, uh, with, uh, this particular audit. Uh, however, um, I'm committed to, uh, having the firefighters here to, uh, speak to this issue. And Mayor, if you don't mind, I hope we don't have to postpone the budget, but I will be bringing this up again at the next council meeting. Uh, and if we need to do a resolution for a continuous operating budget, we may want to be prepared for that, uh, just in case. I'm not going to, uh, because you just came up with this information, I'm not going to, uh, uh, make any decisions about it until such time the firefighters have been present. I spoke with, uh, Steve Jones by phone. He's out of town getting his daughter situated in Auburn. So I think it's only appropriate and befitting for us to, um, discuss this and revisit this, uh, in the presence of those firefighters. So I will be bringing it up again, um, at the next council meeting. And, um, Mayor, if you don't mind, I certainly like for this to be presented and, and discussed again, uh, at that particular meeting. And, uh, I'm assuming we'll be prepared to, uh, vote one way or another with that, at that particular time.
Yeah, Ms. Culver, there's nothing to vote on right now?
Right. I understand that.
Okay. Dr. Robinson?
I'm new, so, you know, forgive my ignorance here, but in those forty percent of cases where no change was found in the audit, did they have a similar process where they got to come to council and respond to the audit findings? Has that ever happened before?
When, when there is no audit, uh, or justification to change a salary or grade, then no, there's no presentation to council in regards to that.
So this would be an unusual thing that we would be doing just for firefighters?
That's correct.
I'm wondering if, uh, there, that seems to call an issue of fairness here, that we're singling out a particular group, and I'm not sure that's fair to those other employees.
If I could come in on that, um, any employee who requests an audit would have that ability to come to the council. Uh, this topic has been, uh, topic that's been heavily discussed for a long period of time. We always talk about transparency and being open, and I think it's only appropriate and befitting, uh, for them to at least, uh, be, uh, privy with this particular information. Uh, if they choose to speak to it, they certainly have that right to do that, as well as anybody. And, and I certainly don't want to give an appearance of doing anything special for any particular employees, because, Mayor, I know we value all of our employees. Um, and, and all of them will be given the same opportunity. Now, if I could digress for just a minute, I know this is not an item that we're voting on, but I do know, Mayor, that you're gonna, uh, introduce the budget at the next council meeting, and your budget is gonna be based on a decision that this body makes as it relates to what happens with the firefighters. And that's only fair for us to give you that courtesy
Sure.
to decide something on that before you get your budget passed, because you may decide to do something differently. So what I'm asking of this body is that, uh, if we have to delay the budget for an additional two weeks, and since we're starting our new, uh, well, I guess it doesn't matter. Our fiscal year is not starting until October one, so we'll still have time if we chose to...
If it's, if it's okay with you, um, with council, we will bring forward our budget as, and, as such, uh, as, as of working through the policy that we've already done. If it has to be amended after, um, after it's brought forth and introduced, then we have that two-week period or three-week period until, um, uh, the, the, uh, the September tenth meeting to, to adjust if, if it is. But we need the council to make a decision one way or the other in, um, in that two-week period, uh, because we've, we've got to move forward, and then we can have our budget done before October first. Um, the budget will include a, a one percent quota for employees. Uh, if, if, if we go this other way, then, then we're gonna have to adjust those numbers. And it's the only way to do it, to come up with a balanced budget. So, uh, we'll talk about budget, uh, at, at next meeting, and we'll introduce that, and, uh, if that's okay with you.
And Ms. Culver, obviously, at the end, the council's in control of the budget, so three members can do whatever they wish. So the mayor's gonna present it to us, and I think we just move forward and make good decisions?
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling, is this about this issue?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I know we're talking about time and everything, but I guess there's always the, uh, option, if we feel like we need to, that we could even have a work session. But it looks like, uh, you know, we're talking about at least having a, a month process or before the, um, fiscal year, although the sooner the budget gets passed, the easier it is, you know, less complicated to implement it for the, uh, for the new fiscal year. But there's always a work session we could do in between that odd Thursday.
Absolutely. Anything else on this issue?
Mr. President?
Doc Showers.
Mr. Thomas, uh, the current firefighter schedule, how does it compare with other cities the size of Huntsville, uh, in the south here?
Councilman Showers, I haven't looked, I don't have that handy. I know that our salaries are comparable, or even higher than a lot of the cities, uh, within the state of Alabama. So the council alone with the mayor have done a great job of setting our salaries at a, a good rate.
If you wish, I could, I can address that. Doc Showers, we, uh, as part of this process, we, we asked ourselves that same question, just how do, how do our firefighters compare to their peers in other cities? Uh, and we looked at what we define as our peer cities throughout the southeast. So, uh, to make sure everybody understands what I mean by our peer cities, we took all the cities in Alabama, uh, all the cities in Mississippi, Tennessee, Georgia, and North Florida. So essentially, the areas that border Alabama. Uh, and any city with a population of at least a hundred thousand up to three hundred thousand. And since we're, uh, I picked those, those populations into something that, uh, that we talked about, uh, just because Huntsville is close to the middle of that, so it kind of went a hundred thousand on either side, uh, to define that as our peer city. So just so everyone understands, that's, that's how we defined it, was a, a border state and that population. Uh, there are twelve cities that meet that definition, uh, and as we look at our firefighter pay, uh, looked at entry level, the midpoint of their career, and then when they're topped out on the pay scale. Um, so within those twelve cities, at the entry point, uh, we are the fourth highest. Uh, at the midpoint, we're still the fourth highest, and then at, when they top out, uh, they're the third highest. So, uh, topped out, the only two cities that have a higher salary than, uh, than Huntsville is Tallahassee, Florida, uh, and that's about, uh, per year, about thirty-three hundred more per year. Uh, and then Birmingham, uh, is, uh, four hundred ninety-nine dollars higher. And then, the other, all the other cities are below us, uh, in some cases significantly, uh, below us. But I've got that on a chart here, if, uh, if any members of council like to see that, the, the actual numbers, and I have it available to you.
Doc Showers, have you finished?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Kling?
Uh, Mr. Hamilton, I didn't quite understand. Is that for the position of firefighter, or were you talking about in general about the, the pay firefighters, which we, we would lump in, you know, fire captains, uh, and all the other?
That is the actual firefighter position. That's, that's fire, that's so, that's our, uh, firefighters, grade thirteen.
Do we, uh, do you have any comparison on the other positions, or?
I, I don't hear it with me, but we could do that.
Okay.
Council members, have we finished with that issue? Uh, before we go on, uh, there's many elected officials here tonight. We welcome all of you here. I know we have people from Madison County and Limestone County, and, uh, glad you're here and being with us. Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Number five is business with outside legal representation. We have a, a decision regarding the personnel hearing for Richard Fowler. Council members, you know, per parliamentary procedure, if there's no motion, that means we agree with the Human Resources Department, and there's no changes to the decision. If you don't agree with the decision of the personnel, uh, here, Personnel Department, then we need to make a motion and say what we do. So, uh, if there's no motion, we're gonna move on. Does anybody have a motion? Okay. We're now at public hearings to be held. Now is the time and place for a public hearing pursuant to Alabama Code eleven dash ninety-nine dash one, et cetera, on the proposed creation of a tax increment financing district tentatively named TIF District Six. Mr. Davis?
Good evening, council members. In the public, uh, tonight is a public hearing for the proposed TIF District Six. Last council meeting, you approved a resolution for us to create this project plan. Tonight, we're presenting to you and to the public. The TIF District Six will encompass, uh, six thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven acres within the corporate limits of Huntsville in Limestone County. All activities provided in the project plan will take place within the corporate limits of the city of Huntsville. The proposed TIF district contains areas for, uh, which are currently underutilized or undeveloped within this proposed TIF boundary. Uh, the city's maximum commitment for the project cost within the proposed TIF, uh, District Six is sixty-eight million dollars. Uh, the project plan will be implemented within a five-year, uh, five years of the creation of this TIF district. Uh, what that means is, uh, we're gonna, as I've mentioned to you the previous meeting, uh, our project plan for this TIF District Six will be conservative. Uh, we will not implement all projects at one time. We will implement those as funding allows within that five-year statutory limit of starting those projects. Uh, the proposed TIF District Six plan would capture, uh, property tax mills from any new development, I want to stress, new development, uh, as a result of the proposed public works improvements. Uh, the, the TIF District Six project plan area currently produces, uh, ninety-one thousand dollars of annual property taxes. Uh, these current tax collections will not be captured by the district, meaning that the, both municipalities, the county and city, and the school systems within this TIF district will continue to collect those, uh, proceeds. Uh, the proposed tax instrument capture rate will be thirty-five mills designated for the city of Huntsville, typically designated for the city of Huntsville, thirteen and a half mills that are currently designated for Limestone County, and five and a half mills designated for Limestone County schools. Again, the ninety-one thousand that's currently being generated within the proposed TIF district plan will, will continue to go to those entities as they are today. Uh, this is a map depicting the TIF boundary for TIF District Six. As you can see, within this boundary, uh, is probably undeveloped, uh, land, uh, that is in need of help to be the future development. Uh, as I stressed the last council meeting, creating this TIF does not require the development to occur. Uh, we're only trying to create public work projects that would foster that. Uh, the proposed project plan for the TIF District Six includes six public works projects. Uh, the first would be extension of Greenbrier Parkway, estimated at thirty million dollars. Old Highway Twenty improvements, uh, estimated at eight million dollars. Swancot Road improvements on the south side of I-565, estimated at three million dollars. Chase Farm Boulevard improvements, estimated at two million dollars, located on the south side of I-565. Sanitary Sewer improvements, estimated at five million dollars. This will be within the TIF district at various locations within the district. A K-through-A elementary school and associated rec park, uh, would be located on, uh, Old Highway Twenty, just east of the Greenbrier Parkway, estimated at twenty million dollars. Again, totaling, uh, a total of TIF plan of sixty-eight million dollars. This is a map that depicts the area and locations of these proposed project improvement, public improvements. Uh, the, one item that is in green is, is a portion, a small, very small portion of Greenbrier Parkway that's currently under construction now. Uh, the remaining portions of Greenbrier Parkway, uh, to the north of Huntsville Brown's Ferry would be, uh, that portion of thirty-million-dollar extension of Greenbrier Parkway. Uh, the goal of any TIF district is, is to implement public works projects to foster growth in an area, uh, that would otherwise struggled, uh, to provide economic growth to that area. Uh, TIF District Six is no different. I wanted to, to give the public and the council an opportunity to see what we believe with these improvements, uh, moving forward, the TIF would create for this general area. Three things that, that typically we have seen historically in our seven TIFs, if this one is approved, would be our seventh TIF, is, is both industrial, commercial, and residential development. Per our zoning and, and the infrastructure we plan to put in place, uh, moving forward, this TIF would create, uh, many opportunities for Polaris-type and target distribution-type developments to create, uh, major job employment centers. Also create areas, uh, shaded in purple that will pop up on the screen, uh, for regional and, and local neighborhood-type commercial and retail, office space in retail. And then, finally, uh, kind of the gold colors, residential and multifamily areas, uh, for future development. So as you can see, uh, putting this infrastructure in place through this TIF district, uh, creates a very dynamic area of Huntsville and Limestone County. I'd like to point out that if you, if you look, uh, there's benefactors outside of the TIF district from creating this TIF and putting this infrastructure in the TIF. Many of the shaded areas that you see lie outside this proposed TIF district. So not only does, uh, creating this TIF and, and doing the public works improvement projects within this TIF district help the district that we're creating, but it also helps advance, uh, taxes, both in, in sales and property taxes outside the district, which those entities like the county schools, the city schools, Limestone County and Huntsville would immediately see, uh, with the TIF district still in place. Um, I'm prepared to answer any questions the council or the public may have.
Thank you. Uh, was any, does anybody from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Ms. Reed, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please?
Jackie Reed, one thousand eight, Bob Wallace. I'm still on Bob Wallace.
Welcome.
You know, do we, do the city taxpayers own any of that property as of today?
We do.
Yes.
Yes. How many acres do we own?
We currently own about sixty acres as the, that was, that is the proposed site for the elementary school and, and rec park. It was donated to the city several years ago.
And, and I got several questions. Don't get upset at me.
No, we're not upset. What we're gonna do is we're gonna take all your-
Thank you. Thank you. I wasn't here the last time I got a whole lot of questions.
Ms. Reed, we're gonna take all your questions and then get answers for them. So go ahead.
The fifteen hundred acres, fifteen million dollars, we paid for four hundred and something acres out there in Limestone County. Is that in this, anywhere, in this deal, anywhere?
Go ahead with all the questions, and we'll get you answers.
Well, y'all will forget what I've asked.
We're trying to write it down.
People will forget what I asked. Anyway, um, tax increment financing, I, I was in the middle of, uh, the other mayor, Spencer's, when she started tax increment financing. It is a tax property increase to each and every one. Maybe you're not gonna start it immediately, but my property tax went up on, uh, Jack Holman, when you put one up out there, and the people say it's not, but it is. It's a tax, property tax increase. I know your development is good. You already probably got your developers sitting out there. So what are they putting into this project that we're putting sixty-nine million? Where are you gonna get this money to do all this work with? We're struggling in the city, and have you got the traffic solved already, getting out to these places and the big developers? And is, uh, the city schools today getting any school taxes from Limestone County already today? Is that happening? Maybe you can answer some of them, and I'll ask some more.
No, ma'am. Keep going. Do you have any other questions?
Oh, yeah.
Well, let's hear them.
Okay. What, what length of time, I may not be here when y'all get off this develop. Um, what length of time are you looking at doing these roads, having this money, and when this development's gonna start?
Okay. Is that it?
Well, I'm sure I'll have some more when you answer some of them.
Okay, you may.
Go ahead.
Here were the questions. Is she, Ms. Reed asked about the fifteen million dollars of property. Is that in? I think she's talking about the McDonald Land, which I don't believe the fifteen million is right, but go ahead.
Councilman Russell, I believe she asked about the Polaris purchase, uh-
Okay.
-land that we purchased as part of the economic incentive for Polaris. It is in the heart of the TIF district. It's probably, uh, predominantly the only piece of property that's currently being developed. It's predominantly undeveloped. Construction has just started. Uh, so it's one of the few pieces that actually has some development taking place.
And Ms. Reed, were you talking about Polaris, Polaris property?
Talking about the Sewell property where we paid fifteen million for four hundred and something acres. He can't, I can't understand what he's saying. Maybe he can speak louder.
I'm sorry.
Uh, the TVA mega site, we do have a land option. We have not purchased that property, and it is not in this TIF.
Okay. The Sewell property is the TVA mega site. The city doesn't own that property, and it's not in the TIF, is the answer? Okay, where do we get the money? Is there- Is there next question to $68 million? Can you explain that again?
Once, if you approve the, this TIF District Six, there'll be geo-bonds that will be issued. We are not planning on going and issuing a bond issue of $68 million. Currently, we think that the first bond issue will be only for Greenbrier Parkway somewhere in the $8 to $10 million range. As I showed in blue, the multiple industrial sites, we're hoping will come to fruition within that five-year period of putting this infrastructure in. As those were to occur and create new taxes within this TIF district, we would then go back to the bond market to implement some more of these projects.
Thank you.
If it does not occur, we may not implement all these projects. Maybe only get two or three, or hopefully all six.
Right. Ms. Reed asked, was traffic considered? I think is what she said.
Absolutely. That's why the TIF project plan that you see is predominantly roads.
Okay. Does, do the city schools receive any money from Limestone County now?
Not that I'm aware of. We have very few rooftops.
So in the city of Huntsville, if they're in the city of Huntsville, will we receive money?
We do. It's very light. We have very few rooftops in the area.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Reed?
Sort of, kind of. And I got two more and I'll let you go.
Okay, hold on. What is the length of time you're looking at for the projects?
By statute, council members and public, we have five years to implement the plan. After five years, we cannot embark on any of these projects.
Okay. And Ms. Reed had, she didn't ask a question. She made a statement that the TIF is a property tax increase. Will you explain to the citizens why that's not so?
I will. We've had a few calls into my office to explain that. This is not a property tax increase. The millage that is currently set in this incorporated area of Limestone County stays the same. All the TIF does is allow the new property taxes created from growth to be captured at the current millage rate. We're not changing millage rate for any properties. And for that to pay back the bonds we issue for these improvements, typically, historically, our TIFs have paid off early. We've had several that we've brought before you that today, both the county and the city and the partner in school system, both county and city are reaping the benefits of that.
And then the last question was, what have private businesses or developers put into this project?
Zero. This is a public works project in the TIF district.
And I might say that the investment right now, the private developer, will be the $34 million that Polaris will be investing in the property to build their plant and facility. That is the only investment that we have from private developers at this time on this property.
Ms. Reed, does that answer your questions?
And so Polaris is going on this property here?
It's part of the TIF property.
He is going, they are going on part of this property.
Ma'am, Polaris is in the green, right there, on the chart.
They need to put down more money and help us. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
But there is a property tax increase. I have to be, go to the tax assessors and collector's office and ask them. The Parkway City Mall, up to my son's property taxes, it helped. I live on Jack Holman. When you put that in over there, I went to the tax assessors' office and wrote a whole article in the Huntsville Times about this. So it may not be today, but when the development comes, and whoever's sitting out there today, when you okay this, yes, it is a property tax. Go to the collector's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council on this particular issue? Mr. Cox, you go first, and then Ms. McCauley will get you second. Mr. Cox, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Jerry Cox, 4029 Telstar Circle. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I've attended these meetings since TIF one, so I've become pretty much aware of the process and all that. I think we need to commend the mayor and Colonel Hamilton, and certainly Mr. Davis, and I'm sure Mr. Joffrin, and then a lot of other team members on this effort. What this, one thing that this will do, this is going to make that mega site a mega site plus plus. It's going to, it's going to make this hard for any other areas to compete with this mega site, once this, this roads and the sewer and all gets, gets put in there. There really not much that needs to be said about it, but you know, it's, there's few places around with the, with the development potential that this has, so I think it, I think it's a great, and hope that the council will approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Ms. McCauley?
Yes, I have three questions.
Okay.
First of all, one is not really a question, but an understanding that this new elementary school will be a Huntsville City Schools facility? And if it is, it would go by the segregation order that we have in place? And it will be modeled and built upon our current standards? And with that being said, with our past experiences, I'm looking at your estimate, and $20 million won't be enough. I estimate you put about another $8 million on there. And if, if it comes in, whenever it starts to be constructed, under, over that tab, will the school system have to pick up the difference? Or will we come back to the TIF? And it looks like it's real close to a railroad. And I was trying to figure out how close, because we had experience with railroads, we don't want to go there no more. How close is it to the railroad track? Those are the three things for right now.
And I'm sorry, I've got, I think it was, I heard two questions.
One statement.
Okay, one statement. So the elementary school, Mr. Davis, Ms. McCauley's saying $20 million is light for an elementary school. She's suggesting it should be more for $28 million. Who would be responsible for the difference or any overruns? Or is this just an estimate? Or tell us how this works?
Council members and Dr. McCauley, $20 million, if you look at the elementary schools we have replaced within the city limits of Huntsville, those are existing schools, well-populated areas around. This is mainly an undeveloped area. So if we embark on an initial K school, I would not see that type of population students most of our elementary schools see. It would be built to Huntsville City Schools standards, but we think this is an estimate that for an initial school, knowing that in the future, that school would need to be expanded in years to come.
Let me give you an example. Sunny Hurford Elementary School is a K-six, and it's $18 million, and it's for 600 kids. And it doesn't have the playgrounds, or not the playgrounds, but the ball fields and the gym that's going to be necessary for a K-eighth. You got to then include your athletic facilities. So $20 million is going to be on the short side. This is my opinion, so would you please just look at it?
Yes, and could I add this? You know, we work in partnership with the schools. We have worked in partnership through this whole entire rebuilding of the schools, and we will continue to work in partnership with the schools. We have an agreement that was signed by both the school board and the city council with the McDonald family as they brought in their, their property into the city, that when 800 rooftops were out there, that we would be building a school. And that was an agreement that was signed by both parties before both of us were elected. But we still, we still honor those because that's part of the corporate structure of what you do. Within five years, will 800 house tops be built? You know, there's, it would be a long, long shot that is there. But we have, we put that in so that we could honor our agreement if that, if that did so happen. But within five years, I have serious doubts if we will get there. We have tried to keep your attorney involved as we have gone through this, so that he could explain that to the judge as we have, to make sure that we don't, they don't feel like we're setting outside the lines of the desegregation lawsuit. And we've had that same conversation with Dr. Sisk last week, and Dr. Sisk has some exciting plans, which someday he'll be able to talk about too. But that will also have to be done in conjunction with the desegregation lawsuit. And you know, we, we want to make sure that it works for everybody. We have made a pledge to that judge that we will make sure it works, and that we will not do anything that will, that will upset the, both the intent of that order and the rules of that order. So we're going to work with everybody as we work through that.
Mr. Davis, Ms. McCauley's other question was, how close is the school site to a railroad?
You know, from the perspective of the map that's on the screen, it looks fairly close, but in all actuality, the railroad's about a mile south of the, of the school. The school site is on the north side of Old Highway 20. The railroad's actually on the south side of Old 20.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council on this issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. The chair moves for approval.
Mr. President?
Is there a second?
Not, are we going to be able to have some council discussion? This is just to put the motion on the floor, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. We've done this a million times.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Council member makes a motion. Dr. showers, says second it. Mr. Kling, conversation.
Okay. Just question, Mr. Davis, the Greenbrier Parkway, is that going to be a city road or is that going to be a state road?
It will, it will be a city road.
And if I can add to the council, just to let you know, last week, I talked to Dr. Sisk and to Mark Yarborough, who's chairman of the Madison, of the Limestone County Commission. And you know, and, and we have, we have promised them all the way through this process that we are going to work with them. We want to work for the good of Limestone County, for the good of Huntsville, for the good of the whole area. And Dr. Sisk, we appreciate you being here tonight, but we pledged to y'all that we will be working with you very closely. We could not have gotten the Polaris plant here, located here, without the total cooperation of the Limestone County Commission and with, with Mark Yarborough's help and leadership. We could not have gotten that located in our area. There are many more projects that we are working on in that same area, and we have that same cooperation and that same pledge that we will work with these groups to make sure that everybody is a winner out of this, because that's our job, is to make sure that everybody is represented, everybody's a winner, that this area develops properly, and that everybody prospers out of it. So Dr. Sisk, we promise that to you, and that's our, our, our promise, and I hope you will find that we're always good for that promise.
Mayor Battle, would any other council members like to comment, discussion? Mr. Culver, then we'll go to Dr. Robinson. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Davis, you stated, I believe, that $35 million would go to Huntsville City Schools, and $11 million would go to the Limestone County Schools. How, I'm sorry.
I was speaking on the current millage rate that is set up in that incorporated area of Limestone County.
That's the millage, not-
Okay.
That's just the millage rate.
Okay. All right. I got it now. Thank you.
Dr. Robinson?
I guess just to clarify, of that $68 million, based on what you showed us previously, $48 million is going to road projects, and that's really the focus and the intent of this, of this TIF. And I think we're getting sidetracked by focusing on the school as much as we are. That's, that will certainly be a piece of this, but the intent is really to develop this area to attract economic development, which will then in turn provide the tax base to grow the rest of the area, bring in the residential developments and other developments that will follow it. So that's, as I understand it, is that correct?
Yes. Dr. Robinson, you're exactly correct.
Okay.
As I mentioned earlier, council members and the public, Greenbrier Parkway will be focused, number one, is to get in that connection to Huntsville Brown's Ferry. That and the sanitary sewer extensions, which lead to jobs and industrial growth, is our first two projects that we will hit hard. The remaining projects will come as we feel that the confidence within the TIF district will support those.
Including the, the school, because there is nobody out there right now.
That's correct.
Now, just to clarify, when that school has to be built, and I was there when we were doing the contract, but it was a while ago. And I, and I raised the issue, because the original contract said it has to be built within five years. And I said, but there's nobody out there. So what if five years comes and there's still nobody out there? So we put that little piece in there, but we had a discussion about whether it was going to be rooftops, or families, or what. And, and I think now it says certificates of occupancy. So is that single-family or multifamily?
Typically, it's kind of open-ended for the agreement that we have with the school system. We're going to look at certificates of occupancy and mainly kind of take that and get a population. I mean, that's really what we're geared towards of building a school, is having a population. So we would lean more heavily to the single-family residential than we would the multifamily.
Because there are some apartments that are popping up out there that may or may not have children in them.
Right.
So just because you have those apartments doesn't mean you necessarily got kids.
That's correct.
Whereas with the single-family residences, you might be more likely to have them. At any, so my, my thought there is, I don't, I don't want to get the, the project derailed from the focus, which is the infrastructure development for economic, for economic growth out there. The school is kind of a last piece to it that will come at the end, and we've got plenty of time to work out the details. But we do need to be cognizant of the fact that there is a court order and a judge who's watching what we do, apparently more closely than any of us thought she was, and, and that the, and also that the funding that's provided for the school is adequate to build the kind of school that will be needed down the road when those rooftops come in.
Mr. President?
Mr. Joffrin?
If I can make one further clarifying comment and then address the issue of the public hearing. It was never the intent for the city or this TIF to drive the issue of the school. The intent was that if that decision is made by the school board, and if a decision is made within the next five years, that the city wanted the TIF to be able to support at least $20 million of that cost. So it's really a gift to the school board of, of $20 million of cost if the school board makes that decision. I hope that clarifies that to some degree.
And you want no motion on the public hearing, or is it just for the-
This is, this is simply a public hearing. There's no, there's no action item to be taken tonight.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. President, I guess I would, looking at school board members and being one, a former member myself from the 80s, I kind of echo, I think, what Mayor Battle and Mr. Joffrin had said. You guys are the elected officials. I've been in your shoes. Your legal authority in the eyes of the Alabama Constitution is equal with ours. We work with y'all. We want to work with y'all, but you know, it's not our role, and I don't think anybody's up here trying to dictate to you what to do. We, we respect you, and in my case, I empathize and sympathize with you for the good work that y'all do.
Thank you. Further discussion? We're now on to number two. Now is the time and place for a public hearing authorizing a city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of the cutting and removing of grass and weeds against certain properties. Mr. Benyon?
Yes, this resolution identifies 42 properties that are in violation of the city's grass and weed ordinance. The properties are identified in attachment by owner and location. The owners receive written verification, written notification by regular mail that they were in violation of the ordinance, and were given 14 days to correct the violations. All 42 owners failed to respond, and community development issued work orders to cut these properties at a total cost of $9,115.87, and an average cost of $217.05. The attachment also identifies the date and calls for cutting the properties. The owners received written requests by regular mail for payment, and they failed to respond, so I'm requesting property assessments be placed on these properties in order to collect our costs. The owners may wish to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Benyon. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Ms. Reed, if you'll state your name and address for the record and speak just on this issue.
Jackie Reed, same address, 1008 Bob Wallace.
Thank you.
I just, I want to ask one question. $9,000 to cut the grass? What happens if they don't pay that?
We place a lien on the property.
You'll take the property?
No, there's a lien placed on the property for the value of cutting the grass, the service that the city rendered.
That's $9,042 properties, isn't it?
Yes. It's roughly about $250 per property usually.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to comment on this issue? Public hearing is now closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have several public hearings to be set. We have a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning property lying on the west side of South Shoddy Road and on the north side of South Village Square Road for neighborhood business C-1A District to Residence 2A District. This will be set for the September 24th regular council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Dr. showers. All those in favor sending a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Two is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning property lying on the west side of US Highway 231 South and on the north side of Magnet Carter Place of Magnet Carter Place from Light Industry District to Residence 2 District. This will be set for the September twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Robinson. Mr. Culver, did you second that? Mr. Culver seconded it. Discussion. All those in favor sending a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Three is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance zoning newly annexed property lying on the north side of Capshaw Road and on the east side of Autumn Branch Drive to Residence 2 District. This will be set for the September twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Doc. Showers, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion. All those in favor sending a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Four is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance to delete Article twenty-one Neighborhood Business C-1A District Regulations. This will be set for September twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, regular council meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kling, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion.
Yes. Mr. President, can someone explain why the deletion in this particular action?
Do we have a representative from Planning Department that can come to the microphone and explain this? Mr. McGuffey?
Yes, sir. We're looking to remove this district out of the ordinance. There's only one piece of property in the city of Huntsville that currently zoned this and with rezoning, there will not be any districts in the city that are with this zoning designation.
Okay. That answer your question, Doc. Showers?
It does.
Okay. All those in favor setting a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Five is a resolution to set a public hearing for suspension of licensure for certain taxpayers. This will be set for the August twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Doc. Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Six is a resolution to set a public hearing for suspension of licensure for certain taxpayer. This will be set August twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Doc. Showers, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Seven is a resolution to set a public hearing for Terkessa Jefferson and Brian Ball doing business as Party Life LLC. This will be set August twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, the regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Doc. Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Eight is a resolution to set a public hearing for Cecilia Kentage Jr. and Tiffany Kentage doing business as KTI Express Courier. This will be set for the August twenty-seventh, regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Got a motion by Ms. Kling. Doc. Showers, will you second that?
Yes.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Nine is a resolution to set a public hearing for Charlie Pat Reynolds doing business as Trans Care. This will be set August twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, the regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Doc. Showers, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Ten is a resolution to set a public hearing for Tanya Butler doing business as Elder Ride. This will be set for August twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, the regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Doc. Showers, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now communications from the public. When I call your name, you have three minutes to address the council. Ms. Felicia Dangerfield, welcome.
My name is Felicia Dangerfield. I live at ten twenty-one Park Lane and I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here, but I have a couple of concerns. I've been here once before and I told you I would be back, but he said that it was okay if I played a tape because you had two of your officers come out to my home. Again, one of them was Wade Beatty and the other one was Amanda Carmine and they came at eight fifty-five.
Ma'am, I need to stop you. It's not okay for you to play a tape. You can speak at the microphone, but you cannot play any tape?
I was just asking Mr. Kling. He said it was. So, you, him, he...
I'm sorry, that's...
He is correct. I'm sorry, I thought...
It's fine.
Okay, if I couldn't respond, I thought you were talking about you had something. I didn't know if it was something that was a legal related issue, but since we didn't have a PA system that you could do that.
Oh, you're fine, sir. It's okay.
So, we'd be glad to hear from you. Go ahead.
We're fine. We're gonna move on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, but the key to it is you have your officer come to my home at eight fifty-five. From my understanding that she went and told, they told my neighbors a lot of things about me. Okay, at eight fifty, eight forty, I'm in my home and I hear this woman, I hear this cussing and clowning how about what the police have told her about me, just acting a fool. So, called the police again. The same two officers come to my home, Beatty and this Carmine, I think she's part of that little Russell thing, but...
Ma'am, I'm sorry, we're having trouble hearing you speak strongly into the microphone.
Okay, so they come to my home again. Well, I called the police again. The woman's still out there just cussing, acting a fool and I think I went and I looked at your ordinance about disturbing the peace and those kind of things. I mean, I think that works in Terry Heights just like it does in Hampton Cove. I guess this is the point I'm getting because when they come to my home and they listen to this tape, they feel like this is proper behavior. I mean, if you listen to this tape, the cussing and the behavior on this tape, it's ridiculous and you keep coming. I have about fifty of these. You call every week and this is what you all keep telling me, we gotta live with this. I don't understand why we have to live like this. I mean, if, I mean, I looked at your ordinance so I can make sure that I'm looking at what the ordinance say, what disturbing the peace and all that is, and I don't see how, no way you're gonna listen to this tape or anything else she does and find that that's not true. But the key that I'm saying, so, like I said, the police is called, the tape is seventeen minutes long and I'm just like, where's the police? This woman is cussing and all at once I see her backing up. I'm like, where is the police? I look up, the police is sitting right down there, sitting right there, just sitting there looking. You're nine-one-one call. You're looking at me like I'm crazy. Then when you walk up and you said, you come up and you want to get smart to me and this woman is cussing, you passing right by her cussing like a freight train, but I knew what happened because on the first call, you had went out there and told this woman all this stuff that you had no business telling her. She knew at that point she had the right to come and say anything and do anything she want to me because your police had says, we don't care what you do to this woman. Yes, I would like to have one more minute.
Yeah, it's our fault. We stopped you. Go ahead.
Okay, but like I said, and this keeps going, and the other thing I have is when you go to the magistrate and you go to some of these local offices, if you don't let them talk to you like a dog or do what they ask you to do, you know what the thing, next thing is happening? A police officer is coming escorting you out of the thing. These are public places. Because I don't like that you're talking to me incorrect or whatever you're doing, that's not the next thing is for you to feel that you can just call police on people because they don't do or let you talk to them like dogs. I mean, the warrant magistrate, next day I know, me and my brother met the magistrate trying to get the warrant. Next thing, there's two police officers. What have we done? We ain't do anything. So, because this warrant magistrate didn't want to give me the warrant because they have upheld everything this woman has done for the last two years, you thought that that would make me just run out and shut up, but I'm just not that kind of person because my mama told me that you do what is right and we supposed to have all these other people that's working with you to also have do what is right. I mean, this is ridiculous, some of the stuff that you get when you go to some of these local offices. Police is called every time you do not do or let them talk to you like you some kind of dog or something.
Okay, Ms. Dangerfield, your time's up. Sorry for your experience.
You're fine.
Is there someone from the police department can meet with Ms. Dangerfield and try to work whatever out that could be done?
Mr. ...
Mr. Culver?
Mr. President, ma'am, pardon me, ma'am, you don't have to go back to the microphone, but I just do want to make this comment. I'm taking in everything that you're saying and I've heard you when you've come here before and I'm concerned why, you know, the police is being repeatedly called, although you have that right to call them as many times as necessary, but, and that's an issue that you're going to take up with the police department, but you commented on something that was very dear to me, that the magistrate's office. I ran that office for about seventeen years, thereabout, give or take, and we've never done anything like that. So, I say we never have. We've had folk who had to be removed for obvious reasons, but I'm finding it difficult for you to say that they just called the police on you for no reason.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, ma'am.
You don't have to respond back to me. I'm just expressing my concerns and I would love to talk with you about it and I would love to give you some pointers and tips on how you can go about being successful because it all goes back to how you, you know, talk to people, okay? So, if you want to see me, I'll be more than happy to speak with you.
No, ma'am, I'm sorry. Mr. Culver, you're gonna, you'll get with Ms. Dangerfield?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you.
Is that something?
Mr., I think it's, I'm having trouble with the name. It looks like Hockett, H-O-C-K-E-T-T? Ricky Hockett? Mr. Hockett, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please?
Two oh two West Camber Street. I'm calling about Mr. Shower.
Sir, you're gonna have to speak into the microphone.
I'm just coming to say to Mr. Shower. I had met with him, met with him. He know me and he told me to stop paying my mortgage and this is issues about my mortgage fraud. He told me to stop paying the mortgage. He told me to find out what's going on. I found out it's a bankruptcy fraud. I've been trying to contact his office over and over and over. He been trying to say he gonna meet with me and he tell me keep putting it off, putting it off, putting it off because the individual stole my money was the bankruptcy people. He know this. I done called his office three or four times.
Sir, you address the council or myself as the chair and what would you like us to do?
Looking to what he told me to stop doing. He told me to stop paying my mortgage and that's the issue. I lost my property because of him. He been dodging and hiding from me because the individual stole my property with the bankruptcy people. He know that.
Mr. Hockett, so that's what you had to say?
Yeah, that's what I had to say.
Okay.
And I want to meet with him. Like I said, he had a lot to do with this.
And Dr. Showers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, he'll call you if he needs to. Anything else you need to tell the council?
No, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Howie Ross?
Howard Ross, sixty-six twenty Willow Point Drive. That's in Huntsville, three five eight oh six. I'm trying to find out if there's anyone who knows or knows who I can find who's got archives of city records, at least going back to nineteen eighty for building CFOs or inspections. Inspection Department says that before the last guy was hired, they don't personally keep their stuff there that if it's in an archive and I need it because I've got a rooftop of my own in back of the new Walmart grocery store for Jordan Lane and Oakwood Avenue and apparently a lot of the houses back there were built with what's called a mansard roof and apparently they were approved with the type, with building material that ordinarily doesn't meet code but could have had a variance. And unless if I can dig up the archives or wherever you store old CFOs or inspection records, this house is going to get torn down because the rooftop, the rooftop doesn't meet standards. Who can help me?
Ms. Traga?
Those records would have to be with the inspection department unless they are voted on by the council. I don't have any of the paperwork in my offices, you know, that is historical. Inspection Department would have it.
They say they don't have it. They don't keep the old stuff that, unless of some, I mean, I can't imagine...
Mr. Ross, what is the name of the, what is the address you're looking for?
Forty-three sixteen Chalet Circle.
Chalet, how do you spell that?
C-H-A-L-E-T, just like a ski chalet.
Okay, I'll ask for it. I'll try to find it.
Can I get back with you?
Sure.
Okay, appreciate it.
Sam Sotrono Senior. It's Mr. Sotrono here. Ms. Jackie Reed?
Good evening and thank you. I'm sorry I missed the last council meeting. Y'all weren't singing happy, 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 were you? I hope not. Anyway, my hundred-year-old mother-in-law, who will be a hundred and one, August nineteenth, she was, I thought she's moving off and leaving me and so the whole family went down there. It really wasn't a vacation, but we had to go check on her and see what's going on. Thanks for allowing me to come back and be a part of you. I am very sad to see leaders retiring. The group was honorable, trustworthy and well-informed me when I asked for things that I needed. They were always there. I want to congratulate them for their retirement. I also want to congratulate the new ones taking over. I've met them. I'm sure they're gonna be great team members and I wish them all very happy. I'd like to see you whole night before I get started on Rampage, fifteen I through M and explain what that's all about. My, one of my main issues is the railroad track on Church Street. You like to miss me permanently. I would like to see the arms go down on Church Street, that railroad, where that train comes through there flying like a crusade, hundred and ten cars of them. I missed the light. I didn't see the light. The horns, cars were blowing. The train wasn't blowing his horn. There were no noise. I didn't have my radio on, but the cars were blowing at me. I looked back in the car, the train was going through. I missed it that close. So, whoever can control the arms on that railroad over there, somebody please look into that and make sure they go down. You know where I'm talking about? On Church Street. I attended, something really bothered me this week. I've attended a historical meeting. I understand the mayor appoints all the members of the historical meeting. I asked for all of them. I want to congratulate Mr. Peter Low, who's a real estate man, probably one of the tops in this city. He made a good nomination to let Mr. Sotrono tear down a house on seven oh six Ward Avenue. He didn't get a second. There's six people there that don't believe it's in historical district that that house needs to come down. There's thirty-four violations on that house. He's been to the historical district six times, been to court, been everywhere. Even community development can show you, even on the paper here, it says you can demolish it or fix it up. It's gonna cost him two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. He got an estimate on it to tear down a house that probably won't bring a hundred thousand. He wants to pay to tear that house down. That's all he wants to vacate the land. Why would you continue? I'm sure you're gonna pay the court cost if he has to take it to court again and that's what he's gonna do.
Ms. Reed, do you need more time?
I sure do.
One more minute. Go ahead.
I could read you sixty-four violations. Right here's a sheet. I'll give it to you and it says the house could be demolished or torn down. I went over there and asked the girl who's the head of the historical. They really think, I asked any of them if they had a real estate license. No, they didn't even know what I was talking about. So, Mr. Peter Low did make a motion to allow him to demolish that house. They showed the pictures and I have never seen a house with so much damage on it in my life. I'm begging you all and I'm appealing it, and I don't know if this is allowed, to appealing you all to bring those pictures into this council and look at this home in the historical district and allow this man to pay ten thousand dollars. He's eighty-nine years old. He's a war veteran. I can give you information here says you can demolish it or tear it down. The historical society's got their hands locked. They're determined to show that man.
Ms. Reed, your time's up.
How sad.
Pastor TC Johnson?
I'll be back.
Ms. Reed, excuse me, Pastor Johnson. Ms. Reed, Councilman Russell's on that historic commission if you ever need to talk to him.
We'll meet in the mayor's office tomorrow at eight o'clock. Pastor Johnson?
TC Johnson, eighteen hundred Sparkman Drive. The issue of Curtis Jordan is not settled in our community. He's a man who the police would call to help him. He wound up dead. Sad thing is that his family has asked cause of death. They went to the coroner. The coroner sent him to forensic science. Forensic science sent him back to the coroner. There's still no cause of death on this man's death certificate. This family does not deserve that kind of treatment. The second thing is we want to continue to understand where we are in the process of acquiring the body cameras or their milestones. We appreciate the fact that the council and the mayor has one hundred percent determined that we're going to get those. I understand that there has to be sufficient training, but the training has to be both for the police department and for the community and we want to take part in understanding the policies that we develop relative to, we must, we must do this. We must have the community understand and the police have to be understand and trained, I believe, on the policies and practices. We're all here in Huntsville together and the history that I understand have seen statistics indicative of me that we're going to have to take a real serious focus on training our, or retraining our police department, but we also have to, I believe it's unfair that the community is well abreast of how this works together. So, I'm asking tonight where we are relative to milestones. Have we created plans? Or we have a committee working policies, those kinds of things? And is the community going to be involved in that development, understanding? If you're involved in development, you can be a part of the explanation, I think, to the community. The third thing is, Mayor, I understand that you appointed a new chief of police and I understand it's a new deputy chief of police and things are changing, perhaps in good time for what we are doing. I was kind of taken aback because it was announced and it had not been ratified, certified or voted on by the council. I thought the last chief of police, I thought that had to happen and so I was kind of taken aback by that because I've been here and I had not heard that the council had voted on that and it's all over the papers that we have a new chief of police. Those are my three areas of concern.
That's true. The council has voted on that. The first thing was the coroner. I don't think we can do anything about that. The second, body cameras. Mr. Hamilton?
So, there is a team of folks out of the city that are putting the program together. There is, they are working through the program. Captain Tommy Presley from the police department is leading the team and there's representatives from ITS, legal, the police department and probably off the top of my head forgetting one, but they are close to finalizing kind of the draft policy. They actually come into me next week for a full update on where we are with the program. They have been very successful looking at a number of different models and I think in terms of the hardware, so there's kind of multiple parts of the issue. In terms of the hardware, I think we're pretty settled on what will work best for us given the compatibility of existing equipment and things. We have stated that one of our goals is to retain the dash cams as well as the audio capability that we currently have and the body cameras become another, another added component. We've seen a lot of situations. We go back and study incidents that we've had and there's some where the body camera would not have captured anything where the dash cam does and vice versa. So, we see great value in scenes potentially captured by multiple videos and so you have multiple angles. So, that in terms of the hardware, that's been one of the, one of the goals and so we're working through ensuring we have the appropriate compatibility with the existing equipment and there are models out there that provide that. So... So, uh, we're very comfortable with, with what that hardware can provide, as well as the price point, given where we are with funding. The, the second piece is the storage of it. We spend a good bit of time this week, and the legal department's focused on what should be the appropriate retention levels. The current policy that we have in terms of retaining the video for dash cam, we don't believe is sufficient. In fact, we think that we need to begin retaining those videos for a longer period of time than what is currently done by policy. So legal is working through that, that'll be part of the update next week to review what, what those retention levels ought to be relative to statutes of limitation and other state or federal law, to ensure that what we do is in accordance with those things, as well as capturing lessons learned from other communities. Now, what that then drives is what ultimately will be the greatest long-term cost of the program, and that's the storage and the management of all of that data. All of those videos result in an enormous amount of data, you know, many, many terabytes worth of data will end up being stored, and so we're working through what's the, what's the best way to do that. We're looking both at a solution where we do it solely internally, where ITS will potentially have the servers and things and actually do the storage and management. We've also engaged with private providers that could potentially do that storage in, you know, in the cloud or some other, some other solution, and just working through what we think ultimately will be, give us the best response to the community, as well as what's most affordable to the taxpayer. So, uh, they're, they're studying and doing the cost comparisons between those solutions, internal versus external, or could even potentially be a hybrid, where there's some that we retain internally and some is sent out to the cloud. So there's a couple of different options, but I'll get a more thorough update next week, and I think the next council meeting, it'd be appropriate for me to give you a full detailed update based on the update from the team next week. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling?
I'll be glad, since I'm the receiving end, I'll be glad to respond about the last question. I've worked with three mem, three different mayors the whole time I've been up here, and it is not unusual that when there is a retirement or disciplinary action or whatever, for another city employee to be brought in to be the quote "acting department head" until the council takes formal action to, to take that person and either make them the new department or whatever. But what Mayor Battle did with the, the police chief that, that he's recommended to the city council, putting him on board for a couple of days until we have our meeting, that's, that's not unusual compared to what we've had in the past. So, I got no problem with it. We'll, we'll vote it up, vote it down later tonight's meeting and, and go on from there.
Thank you.
I guess one thing, one thing about the police chief position, that is a higher-profile position compared to some of the other departments, and certainly in the community, that does get more attention, and the media puts more attention on that versus some of the other departments, so that may be why that kind of stuck out.
Thank you. We have no Huntsville utility items, we have board appointments voted on, we have a resolution to reappoint Roosevelt Dixon to the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals for a term to begin August twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, and expire August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. Is there a motion?
To approve?
Second.
Motion by Dr. showers, second by Mr. Kling, discussion. All those in favor of the appointments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have a resolution to reappoint Ola May Tibbs to the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals for a term to begin August twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, and expire August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Dr. showers, second by Dr. Robinson, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have board appointment nominations. The chair nominates Terrence Fickerstaff for appointment to the Alabama Constitution Village Historic Huntsville Depot Board for a term to begin August twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen, and expire June twenty-six, twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen, and the chair nominates Carrie Farrenbach for appointment to the Healthcare Authority of the City of Huntsville for a term to begin August twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen, and expire August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Are there other nominations? We're now at ten approval expenditures. Ten A is a resolution authorized expenditure for payment. Dr. showers?
Mr. President, I move tonight for fourteen million, five-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars in the four.
Motion by Dr. showers, the chair seconds that motion, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Dr. showers, do you have a finance committee report?
No financial report tonight.
Thank you. Mayor Battle?
Mr. President, in getting ourselves ready to do budget, we have several, several minor changes that we want to put in, in place, and so we would like to ask that we pull fourteen A, B, and E out, and they would require unanimous consent to consider tonight.
Councilmembers, is it okay, is it okay to pull those out? Fourteen A is the introduction of an ordinance to amend ordinance number eighty-nine seventy-nine classification salary plan ordinance. As the mayor indicated, he would like us to consider this tonight. The chair moves for unanimous consent to consider this tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Kling. Dr. showers, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Culver?
Aye.
Mr. Kling?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, we have unanimous consent, the chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers. Mayor, could you explain this, or Mr. Thomas explain?
Yes, we've been working on this for a number of, of years, in consultation with Mr. Taylor, our finance director, the idea of putting assistant director of finance in, in place who can handle the nuts and bolts of the finance office, leaving the finance director the ability to look at the big overall picture of our financial situation. We would like to go ahead and put this position in place so that we can advertise it, start advertising it on Monday, so we can have that person in place mid-October.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Fourteen B is the introduction of an ordinance to amend budget ordinance number fourteen dash six-six-five to modify the authorized strength of the department. As we discussed, Mayor Battle has asked that we consider this tonight. The chair moves for unanimous consent to consider it tonight.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers. Dr. showers, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Culver?
Aye.
Mr. Kling?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, we have unanimous consent, the chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers. Mayor Battle?
This is, this is a continuation of what you just passed by putting that position in place. Now we are modifying the authorized strength in that department, so that, that, that position is in that department, and this is just a continuation of A.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Fourteen E is the introduction of an ordinance amending ordinance number eighty-nine seventy-nine entitled "The Pay Classification Ordinance of the City of Huntsville." The chair moves for unanimous consent to consider this tonight.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Dr. showers, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Culver?
Aye.
Mr. Kling?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, we have unanimous consent, the chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers. Mayor Battle?
This ordinance does two things on it. Number one, it takes your, uh, it takes your public works position. When Mr. Hatfield moved down there, he was a twenty-three, a grade twenty-three. It's, it is a, normally a grade twenty-two, he was already a twenty-three, so he moved with his twenty-three. It moves that back to the twenty-two status in the, in the grade, grading of it, and so then when we appoint someone, they will be appointed in at the twenty-two level where we should be. We have never moved employees backwards when we have moved them from place to place, so that, that falls very consistent with what we've done in the past. Second thing is, our senior executive officers in the city of Huntsville, who would be the city finance director, the city clerk treasurer, the, the city attorney, the city judge, the city administrator, and the director of urban development, to reflect this in the budget, we wanted to move them, move their salaries up, so that the top end of their salary is one-hundred-and-forty thousand presently, move it up to one-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. The bottom end of their salary is eighty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-eighteen, and move that up to ninety-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-nine. The reason for doing this is that we are in a competitive market. We have, we have had, we have had interested governments come to some of our, some of our department heads, who are very good department heads in this position, and especially in the senior executive positions, have, have said that they're interested in them and have talked about paying them more money, and in paying them more money, we could lose them from the services of the city of Huntsville. We think that this is a wise move, is a competitive move on our portion. They are skilled positions, which you cannot find many of those type skilled positions out throughout this market. When you look at it, whether it's a city attorney, a city administrator, a city urban developer who has an engineering background, or, or, or your, or your judge, or your finance director, we have got to be competitive in the salaries that we pay. So I would ask council to move this, so that we can also include this in the budget that will come forward.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Mayor Battle, do you have anything else in your comments?
Uh, yes, I do. You know, as, now that we've got those out of the way, so that we can get ready for the budget in two weeks, tonight, you know, as we've said goodbye to Mr. Hatfield and Chief Louis Morris, obviously there are two, two spots to fill, and I would like to ask the council's concurrence in naming Captain Mark McMurray as chief of police for the city of Huntsville, and naming Chris McNeese as director of public works as of September first, two thousand and fifteen. Both will assume their duties at grade twenty-two, step nine.
Councilmembers, let's do Chief McMurray first. Is there a motion to approve Mayor Battle's recommendation?
I move to approve the recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Robinson, second by Mr. Culver. This is Chief McMurray. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Congratulations, chief.
Mr. President, is the new chief here tonight?
Yes, sir, he is.
I asked him to come to the podium.
Chief McMurray, if you'll come down. Introduce yourself to the council and the public, please.
Thank you. As you said, I was Captain Mark McMurray, I guess I'm Chief Mark McMurray now. Twenty-nine years with the Huntsville Police Department, so I have about, well, about thirty-two years total law enforcement. Very proud of City Huntsville. Practically, I moved here with the space program. My dad brought me here. I want to thank you for your vote of confidence tonight, and I look forward to serving you and continuing the tradition that Chief Morris has kept up here with the integrity, with the building up of, of what he's done, the foundation, and I look forward to a period of growth with, with all you councilmen and mayor. Thank you, city administrator, thank you for proposing me for this position. I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions or comments for Chief McMurray?
Mr. President, on this and also on Mr. McNeese's appointments, I'm going to support that one too. I think these are great selections, I think it's great for city employees to, to see that there's upward mobility, and at the same time for the taxpayers, I think it's great to have these caliber of people available for us to serve as department heads, and they step in, like I've worked with the former captain, if I can call him that, the former West Precinct captain, and he did a great job, very good with the community watching, with the neighborhoods and everything that he's done over there, and the fact that he's familiar with his operation for the Huntsville Police Department, it's a plus compared to, you know, someone who might come in from out of state that may even have a hard time understanding our actions. I think both these are going to be great, great choices.
Thank you. We need a motion on Chris McNeese.
So moved?
Second.
Okay. The motion is by Mr. Kling to accept the nomination, the appointment by the mayor of Chris McNeese. Dr. Robinson's second it.
Mr. Mr. President, if we could clarify to make sure both of those appointments are as of September first, and they come in at grade twenty-two, step nine.
That's clear. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. McNeese, is he here?
He's even wearing a suit, which is not normal for Chris McNeese.
You must have known something big was happening tonight.
He thought it was next time.
Mr. McNeese, if you'll introduce yourself to the public and to the council?
Yes, I will. My name is Chris McNeese. I am with, been with the city of Huntsville for seventeen years, working in the engineering department, coming from the private sector, working for a consulting firm, and have really enjoyed the, the department that I've been with, and looking forward to being part of the team of public works. As I entered the doors down there, saw so many familiar faces, and they just was really welcoming. You have such a wonderful, talented, competent team down there that's really working hard for you, maintaining this infrastructure, so thank you very much for allowing me to serve in this capacity. I grate greatly, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Culver?
Yes, thank you. I have just one request, sir. You're stepping into some very big shoes there, and I would just like to get your cell phone number.
You'll have it, everyone will have it. Terry has done a wonderful job. He has, he has really been top shelf with assisting me in, in this transition, and, and he's brought me up to speed on so many issues. He's, there are some very, very large shoes to fill. He's done a wonderful job down there.
Great. I do thank you, and Mayor, I have Chief McMurray's cell, and if I could just comment briefly too, I've worked with him as a police officer myself back during the day, so I certainly think that Chief McMurray is a great, will be a great department head with the police department.
And Mr. Hamilton will get us all everybody's contact information and give us an org chart soon with all these changes, so we can keep up?
I'll just plug it into my phone and have you on speed dial, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Now communications from councilmembers, Mr. Culver?
I'm sorry, I've still got a few more.
Go ahead, Mr.
I hate to take up all the time, guys. Also, thank you, Chris, thank you very much. Your hair will be white soon, kind of like Mr. Hatfield. Further, we have a, I have an appointment of Randy Scripture to the Von Braun Civic Center Border Control from September eighth, two thousand and fifteen, to September eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. This past, past week, we've had the Space and Missile Defense Conference here, and it's been a great job opportunity. We've talked to a number of businesses who are interested in moving into the Huntsville area. We announced a hundred jobs with Lockheed Martin. It was a very, very good, good conference for us, and lots of activities through this weekend with Huntsville Restaurant Week, Hottest Weekend of the Year Fest, Movies in the Park, Big, and Big Spring East, Despicable Me will be on, and Food Truck Friday is August twenty-first, and remember there are breakfast food trucks every Saturday. And to our young scouts, thank you for coming. You have gotten to see a real picture of democracy in action. I hope that we have enlightened you some. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, just quickly, I, I thought I'd take advantage of this opportunity to talk about these two resolutions that I'm going to present to Robin Givens, who is a renowned actor. I will be presenting that resolution to her at the Phillips CME Church one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary gala. I know Dr. showers and Mayor Battle will be there too on August the twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, at the Jackson Center. Also, I will present a resolution to Mr. Eric Taylor on his performance, and he's a renowned performer, and it's also going to be at the Phillips CME Church one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary gala, to be held on August twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, at the Jackson Center as well. So, Dr. showers, I'm certainly looking forward to your assistance with that, and Mayor, your presence, and anyone else who wants to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kling?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to congratulate the Fraternal Order of Eagles. They celebrated their fiftieth anniversary last weekend, and the mayor and the council had signed a certificate that was presented to them in, in honor of their contributions to the community, many charitable and other activities that they have to make West Huntsville a better place. My monthly town meeting will be going on next Monday night at the library, beginning at seven o'clock, and anyone's welcome, very, very casual. The only rule we have is no one wears a necktie. And a couple of meetings that I attended during the last couple of meetings, the, there was a meeting Monday with the Rocket View Neighborhood Association, which I enjoyed going to. the Rocket View Neighborhood Association, which I enjoyed going to. Uh, they have been working real hard on raising money to, uh, come up with a new neighborhood brick sign to replace the one that, uh, is kind of cracking and falling apart. It's, uh, over fifty years old, and I can congratulate them on the great eye, uh, great energy that they have to, uh, help their neighborhood. Also, I attended a meeting with members of what's known as the, uh, West Huntsville Posse, a group of neighborhood association leaders. Uh, we were talking about different ideas, and I picked up much, uh, much good input, uh, on how, uh, the, uh, new West Lawn property, if it's rezoned, and the plans of the school system go through to sell, uh, things that the city can do to, um, to help make that property, uh, more neighborhood accommodating, and, uh, things from Deceleration Lane, uh, directional signage or directional lighting, to, uh, seeing if a sign can be put up for the adjacent church and other things, uh, are certainly things that are actively being looked into. Uh, I'd like to ask, is Dan Sanders out there by chance? And Dan, I don't care if, well, you, like that. Dan, I know you've had a very full plate, especially with school getting started. Uh, I know you've been working on issues in Madison Heights neighborhood, um, the Governor's Drive traffic going west in the, um, morning and going east in the, um, late afternoon, and appreciate, you know, your efforts on those things.
Thank you.
Um, I think you and I had gotten the same email late this afternoon from, uh, Ms. Robinson, uh, about the problem, traffic problem that's going on adjacent to the Arsenal Gate with, uh, uh, heavy trucks that are coming into that area.
Uh, yes, sir, um.
You're aware of that. But I mean, I know you have a full plate. I'm not trying to stump you, but I just want to make sure you do have that on your list.
I, I did reply to, uh, his email, and I CC'd you on that, and we, we're, we're prioritizing that one, so we're working it.
Okay, and that's all I have, Mr. President. Uh, if Kathy Martin is around, I have something, a paper I just needed to give her that gentleman gave me, but we don't need to stop.
Thank you. Dr. Showers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start off by thanking the Public Works Department under Mr. Hatfield and others for, uh, the project that's going on right now, Pulaski Pike, uh, repaving, uh, that section that we were proposing to do and is in process now, and has asked citizens to be patient, uh, as they complete that particular stretch. On last Saturday, I was delighted to attend the annual Johnson High School North Cluster PTA Back-to-School Parade, well-attended. Uh, the mayor, many other elected officials were there, uh, in attendance to support, uh, that effort by, uh, the president at the Johnson High School, Michelle Watkins, uh, and of course, the chairperson for the parade was Alice Sam. Uh, the North Huntsville Business Association, we will meet on August the nineteenth at one o'clock, uh, at Master Lake Baptist Church. Uh, on August the twenty-first, uh, as the councilman has already relayed, the Philip CME Church will be having their one-hundred-and-fifty Anniversary and Gala, which will be at the Jackson Center. Uh, we'll be in support of that, and of course, uh, the, uh, uh, Second Chance Deliverance and Restoration Ministries, uh, will be held on August the twenty-second, uh, and that will be at Union Chapel. I want to encourage everybody who live in the Terra Heights area, uh, that we have the Terra Heights Community and Farmers Market, and, uh, on August the twenty-sixth, uh, feel free to come and participate, and they have good items there. Uh, it's located at one-hundred Bello Drive, uh, their church parking lot. Uh, those are my items for the night.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Robinson?
I had the opportunity this week to attend the World War II Victory Day Celebration, which celebrated the seventieth anniversary of the ending of World War II. My dad was a veteran of World War II, Korea, and Vietnam, so it was just great to be there, and I had him in my heart as I joined two thousand other people to honor four-hundred-and-fifty World War II vets who gathered at the Davidson Center. Joe Fitzgerald and his team did a remarkable job of putting together a, a really splendid celebration, and it's the kind of thing that, that is just very characteristic of, of Huntsville. We are a very patriotic city. I also want to recognize the city employees who, um, held the Manahouse, um, project. There were people, there were, there were department directors and administrative assistants and just, just so many people from all over the, the, the city staff who were there, just helping. It was hot, it was crowded. We ran out of toilet paper to give away, and, and so the city held, and Belinda put it all together, a, a toiletry drive the next week. What a wonderful response. We have such, we just have a terrific staff here, and it was very evident that night, and I applaud you all for that effort. The mayor, Mr. Russell and I, uh, attended the, the ribbon cutting at the new Whitesburg School. It's a beautiful facility of which the entire community can be proud, and it's, it's the prototype for other schools that are going to be built. So, it, it's just wonderful. If anybody hasn't had a chance to look at it, you need to. Also applaud Dan Sanders and HPD for their efforts to deal with traffic at the new Whitesburg School, which has a new traffic pattern, and the entire community is learning how to make it work. Hopefully, the addition of a second stacking lane will, will help there. It's been a little bit of a challenge, but I have no doubt that they'll, that they're up to handling that. I also want to thank Dennis Madsen for presenting to the South Huntsville Business Association this past Tuesday. As usual, Dennis had, did his tremendous job of sharing the big picture. It's visionary, it's exciting every time I hear it. Again, we have great things going on with our staff. Two quick announcements. The first is that we have listened to the community, have heard concerns about the South Side Park Dog Park, and so a significant redesign is going to take place at the dog park. We've been having some meetings, and thank you Steve Ivy for making that happen. We're having weekly meetings to make that, that happen, and so the dog park will be closed starting September first in an effort to make that redesign. It's going to have one section for small dogs, one section for large dogs, and it's going to be cleared with a sod area, uh, so it will be, I think, a much more friendly environment for small dogs. It's been really good for the big hunting dogs that like to run around, but the little dogs kind of get lost in there. So, this will be a great redesign, and it will, so it will be closed September first. And then the other announcement is that I will have a town hall meeting on August twentieth at six-thirty at the Bailey Cove Library, and Kathy Martin has been kind enough to agree to come and talk about overpass, the, the South Huntsville Overpass projects and other road projects that are going on, and my only rule is that no one has to wear high heels. Um, so I also want to thank personally Terry Hatfield and, um, and Chief Lewis Morris for their service to the city. They have both been extremely responsive to me. In my new position, they have been very patient in helping me learn what I needed to do and have been, have worked very, have been just so responsive as I've brought issues to them, and I, I will miss them, but welcome and look forward to working with Mr. McNeese and Chief McMurray. Um, great additions to, to the staff.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. We're now at thirteen unfinished business items for action. We have four items. Thirteen A is ordinance number fifteen dash five-twenty-seven, amending and updating Chapter twenty-two, Article four, Section two dash one-fifty-two of the Court of Ordinances. This was introduced July twenty-third, two thousand fifteen at the regular council meeting. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion?
Uh, Ms. President, I guess just for the public's benefit, could we get a, just a general explanation?
Sure. This, uh, if each of you got the memo about it, it's a master ordinance for the city code and, and defines certain in, in general budget issues. It was last amended in nineteen ninety-five. Due to our new system rollout on ten-one and many changes in practice since nineteen ninety-five, it's due for an update. Uh, we're modifying the budget preparation process. If you look in there, there are certain dates that things have to be done for the budget, uh, to conform to our practice at least since two thousand, uh, and mainly making some qualitative, uh, assessments, uh, assessments optional by mayor and council, and gives us a little bit of latitude, but also requires us to do some things. Uh, we're changing the budgetary category definitions to conform to our new system. Uh, this is, has no effect on council controls, and we're conforming this council's level of budgetary control to the new definitions, and this is no effect on council level, uh, budget control either. And we're removing certain language that must have been necessary in the nineties, but it's in the personnel ordinances, and this comes from Mr. Taylor. Did I miss anything? Larry, thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is Mr. Culver here?
Yeah, he's talking to the.
Let the record indicate Mr. Culver didn't vote and passed four, zero. Thirteen B is ordinance number fifteen twen, fifteen five-twenty-eight, amending Chapter two, Article five, Section two-two-two, Cell Phone Policy of Court of Ordinances. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion?
Again, this is master ordinance for the city's, uh, city's code defining cell phone policy. It was last updated ten years ago. Slight care, clarifications in certain processes. Uh, the main change, it conforms to the current IRS regulations. Uh, there's no effect on cell phone usage or allowances.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries four oh. C is ordinance number fifteen dash five-thirty, amending Section eight point two, Appointment Rate of Ordinance oh-four-three-one-five Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Mayor Battle?
This one allows lateral moves, uh, both police and fire. Um, it's when you need forty officers, we're opening it up to some outside, and we can get some there tried and true. Iron?
Yes, sir. You're correct, mayor. And also, what it does, it adjusts and allow the police department to hire at least three steps above minimum if we hire off with the officer that has more than seven years of experience. So, uh, great adjustment.
Thank you. Further discussion?
President, does that include both the fire and police department?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, that is correct. Both police and fire, yes, sir.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. D is ordinance number fifteen dash five-thirty-one, and, and it carried four oh. D is ordinance number fifteen dash five-thirty-one, amending Section twenty-two fourteen of Ordinance oh-four-three-one-five Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, sir. This is a request by finance. What it does, it clarifies and cleans up some of the language in our personnel policies and procedure with regards to conference, uh, travel. Uh, there was just some needed clarification. It also speaks now to, uh, credit cards or purchasing cards and travel cards, as well as clarify the need for travel that need to be approved by city council members. And also, um, it provides necessary clarification for advanced payment when it needs to come for approval.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at new business items for introduction. Fourteen A, B, and E have already been approved. Fourteen C is the introduction of an ordinance to amend ordinance number eighty-nine seventy-nine Classification Salary Plan Ordinance. D is the introduction of an ordinance to amend budget orders number fourteen dash six-six-five to modify the authorized strength of various departments. We're now at fifteen new business items for consideration or action. Please notify the chair of any items you'd like to hold for further discussion.
President, I want to hold item fifteen I, J, K, L, and M.
Okay, fifteen I, J, K, and L, and M have been held. Are there any other items?
Uh, Ms. President, I'm, I lost my place here, but the, uh, the park, Stone Middle School, property park five oh one, I mean, eight oh five?
It's X. Project X.
Okay, that's it. I'd like to hold that one, please.
Fifteen X is an X-ray. Are there any other items? Right now, we have fifteen I, fifteen J, fifteen K, fifteen L, fifteen M, and fifteen X. Hearing none. Fifteen A is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one landscape maintenance worker. B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the City of Huntsville and the Madison County Commission for the Fiscal Year two thousand fifteen Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. C is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer and invoke BB and T Bank letter, credit number nine-six-four-one-five-five-nine-one-three-seven-zero-zero-zero-zero-three for Pulaski Corner subdivision. D is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer and invoke Service First Bank, letter, credit number thirteen-seven-eighty for Hawks Ridge Estate subdivision. E is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer and invoke Progress Bank, letter, credit number nine-zero-zero-zero-two-six-eight-one-zero-zero for Midtown on the Park Phase Three subdivision. F is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer and invoke Worthington Federal Bank, letter, credit number two thousand fourteen fifty for Overland Cove Phase Two subdivision. G is a resolution authorizing city attorney to settle the workers' compensation claim of Sharon Grisette. H is a resolution authorizing city attorney to settle the claims of James Buchanan. N is a resolution authorizing mayor to contract with Family Services Center, Inc., for new construction of a house using home investment partnership, partnership funds at twenty-nine oh nine Wilson Drive in the Terry Heights neighborhood. O is a resolution authorizing mayor to contract with Family Services Center, Inc., for new construction of a house using home investment partnership funds at twenty-nine oh three Hart Drive in Terry Heights neighborhood. P is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute change order number one and final to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Tolar Construction Company, Inc., for fire station number nineteen located at twenty-four-fifty-five Old Big Cove Road. Q is a resolution authorizing finance department to issue payroll checks scheduled for Friday, October second, on Wednesday, September thirtieth. R is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter into an agency appropriation agreement between the City of Huntsville and First Stop, Inc. S is a resolution authorizing mayor in agreements with the low bidder, meaning specification outline attached summary of bids for acceptance. T is ordinance to amend budget orders number fourteen dash six-six-five by changing appropriating funding for various departments and funds. U is an ordinance to amend budget orders number fourteen dash six-six-five by changing the authorized personnel strength in various departments and funds. V is a request to advertise and fill the position of Assistant Director of Finance, pay grade twenty, and to fill at a higher than minimum rate if necessary. W is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one regular full-time position of Humane Educator, grade eleven. Y is a resolution authorizing mayor to agreement between the City of Huntsville and OMI, Inc., for Engineering Design Services for Big Spring Park Stabilization and Remediation Plan, project number sixty-five fifteen. Z is a resolution authorizing mayor to agreement between the City of Huntsville and Garver LLC for Engineering Services for Western Area Wastewater Treatment Plant Operations Audit, project number sixty-five fifteen, SP fifty-three. Double A is a resolution authorizing mayor in agreement between the City of Huntsville and Garver LLC for Engineering Services for two thousand fifteen Flow Monitoring Program Annual Operations Maintenance Data Analysis and Reporting, project number sixty-five fifteen, SP fifty-two. Double B is a resolution correcting the descriptive name of, of agreement between the City of Huntsville and the State of Alabama as previously adopted and approved by the City Council of the City of Huntsville pursuant to Resolution number fifteen dash five-five-two on July twenty-third, two thousand fifteen. Double C is a request for authorization to advertise and fill the budget of vacant position of Deputy Director of Inspection, grade nineteen, at higher than minimum if necessary. Double D is a resolution authorizing mayor to contract with Administrative Rectory Courts in the City of Huntsville Municipal Court for the Court Referral Officer Program. Double E is a resolution authorizing mayor to license agreement between the City of Huntsville and Valley Arts Entertainment, Inc. Double F is a resolution authorizing mayor to agreement between the City of Huntsville and Pierce Manufacturing, Inc., for the construction of one enforcer, one oh seven, a cylinder aerial fire apparatus. The chair moves from consolidation approval of fifteen A through H, fifteen N through W, fifteen Y through double F.
Second.
Motion by the chair to solidly approve, second by Mr. Kling. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at fifteen I. Fifteen I is a resolution authorizing mayor to development agreement between the City of Huntsville and City, City Center One, LLC. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Mr. Davis, could you explain this, please?
Council members, I will, uh, give a brief presentation of, of while we're back, uh, to the city council on this mixed-use project, which was the former Holiday Inn, and, uh, once I explain all parts of it, you should, uh, most of the other items are repetitory. Um, just to give you a little quick background, uh, back in February, we brought you a development agreement and ground lease, uh, with City Center LLC, and then, uh, that ground lease was for a ninety-nine-year lease at a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars per year. Uh, the development agreement required City Center LLC to construct one urban-style hotel with a minimum of a hundred and twenty rooms, restaurant and retail space, multifamily units, and office and commercial space. What we're bringing before you tonight changes none of those requirements, as far as what must be built on the site. Originally, uh, the terms within the lease, uh, looked like this. We had a phase-one project, which was the Holiday Inn site itself, and then a phase-two site that was a purchase option, uh, which is the Scruggs Center. Uh, the phase-one, as I mentioned before, was a hundred and forty-four thousand dollar annual lease payment to the city for use of that property, and phase-two was a million-dollar purchase. Uh, these terms do not change. Uh, we will still collect a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars annually for use of the Holiday Inn property, and the phase-two property, should they move forward, that purchase option would, would still be a million dollars. So, what did change? Uh, as they have developed the project, and there's been a need to subdivide the lease into two parcels. One predominantly Track One, which would be the multifamily units, retail, and office space, uh, so that they could joint venture, uh, with a multifamily partner. Uh, the developer that we have selected through the RFP process is predominantly office and retail. Uh, they are bringing in a, a high-quality multifamily partner to do the multifamily piece. The same holds true with Track Two. Uh, Track Two, uh, would be a, a separate lease with a hotel operator and City Center as a joint venture for the hotel and retail portions of Track Two of the, of the phase-one project. Uh, phase-two option property would be held with City Center One, uh, which is the original developer, uh, that, that you entered into the, the first development agreement and lease. Uh, when we subdivided this, we prorated the hundred and forty-four thousand dollars per year to the tracks per their acreage, uh, which would put, uh, City Center One, which is Track Two, the two-point-eight acres, at fifty-two-thousand-seven-hundred dollars annual payment to the city. City Center Two LLC, which is Track One, the, almost the five-acre track that you see in blue, would have an annual payment to the city of ninety-one thousand three hundred dollars. Again, the, the city option purchase price for Phase Two is still set at a million dollars. Under the proposed new agreement, uh, the total annual lease payments remain a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, as I previously mentioned. It's still a ninety-nine-year term. The option property is still, will remain at a purchase price of a million dollars. Uh, developers is to construct all mixed, mixed-use components as originally required in the current development agreement. Uh, as I just mentioned, the Phase One property has originally entered into, uh, separating into two tracks, and all original terms regarding the city's protection and control of the project remain unchanged. Uh, these are the proposed mixed-use uses of the different tracks. As I mentioned, the City Center Two- City Center Two track would be multifamily units, office, and retail. Uh, the City Center One track would be hotel and retail, multi-story buildings, and then the option property, uh, is hotel, office, and retail. And also holds true, there is a commitment in the development agreement and the ground lease, as the developer takes down phase two of the property, that million-dollar purchase is reserved for the redevelopment council high. Phase one will still remain a minimum of, uh, a maximum of two hundred and thirty multifamily units, at least one urban-style hotel. If you move forward tonight, uh, the developer, within about ten days, will have signed paperwork that we can publicly announce the hotel brand. Uh, it's very exciting, but it's contingent on this moving forward tonight to be able to publicly release that. Uh, a minimum of twenty-eight thousand square feet of retail space and forty thousand square feet of office. Phase two, which is the option track, would be an additional urban-style hotel to be approved by the city of minimum of a hu- hundred rooms and then additional mixed-use, uh, components determined by market demand, retail and office predominantly. Any questions? And, and may I add, with your passage of this, we will terminate the existing ground lease and development agreement that you passed in February.
This takes place. Okay, councilmembers, who, Dr. Robinson?
Well, that was one of my first questions is do, so the, so the council does, doesn't have to, we don't have to have a document that says the other contract is null and void just by passing this? It's understood that it sort of just takes pla- place?
No, we, Peter?
That, that's correct. Uh, your approval of this, it'd be executed by both parties, and that will take the place of what was approved before.
Okay. Uh, the, in my head, I'm thinking of it, and the, the ones and twos were getting me confused, so I was thinking of it as phase one A and phase one B and then phase two.
That, that's a good way to look at it, Dr. Robinson.
Uh, so phase, um, the reason we're doing this is that the developers found interested parties who didn't want to do the whole project, they just wanted to do one little piece of it. Is that right?
Well, the big, the biggest issue was financability.
Or, okay, financing, a small, phase one...
Bringing in, right.
A, phase one B is easier to finance than the whole thing together.
Our original development agreement and ground lease allowed the, the primary developer, City Center LLC, that we entered both documents into, to sublease the property. So, they started that route, and they brought in a, a well-respected multifamily developer and well-restricted hotel developer to help with those components of the mixed use. The issue is when they went to start financing the project, was neither the hotel developer nor the multifamily developer had any relationship with the city. So, it created an issue for those tenants. So, by subleasing or, or subdividing this into two leasable tracks, the hotel and our original developer will create City Center One LLC. Our multifamily, uh, component will take that multifamily developer and our original developer and create a joint venture LLC, so that they have, uh, ties to the city and the city has ties to them. So, it really protects the city and both parties.
So, from what I'm hearing you say, there's really no downside to this. It's an advantage. It helps the process go forward.
Absolutely. Yeah. And, and we, we still have the same protections we had in the original agreements. Those remain unchanged. Uh, instead of one entity, we'll have two.
And quite frankly, it is smaller entities that we have to deal with. So, if one entity has a problem, the other entity moves on forward and still goes forward, um, the other one we can deal with. So, it gives us a little bit more flexibility with the size of who we're dealing with. We don't have one person to look at who is responsible for it. We have two, two different groups, but they're smaller-sized groups to have to work with.
Further discussion?
With, uh, I know there are confidentiality issues. I'm not trying to get you to disclose anything, but are there any, uh, minimum standards, uh, as far as what the hotel flags will be, so that, uh, two weeks from now, we won't wake up to a, uh, an unpleasant surprise as far as it?
Good question, Councilman Kling. Actually, in the development agreement, the city has final approval of that hotel flag. Uh, so, uh, they will present that to, to us. The, the, the name that we're hearing, I think you'll be very, very pleased with.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Fifteen J is a resolution authorized mayor to a ground lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and City Center One LLC. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Doc Showers. There's any need for further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. K is a resolution authorized mayor to development agreement between the City of Huntsville and City Center Two LLC, track one. The chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Doc Showers. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. L is a resolution authorized mayor to a ground lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and City Center Two LLC, track one. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Doc Showers. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. M is a resolution calling for a special session on the seventeenth day of August two thousand and fifteen at five PM pursuant to Alabama Code eleven ninety-nine, ninety-nine dash one, et sec, for the purpose, purpose of meeting with the designated representatives of governing bodies, deferred tax recipients of the proposed tax increment financing district tendently named TIFF District, TIFF D six, TIFF District Six. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Doc Showers. Discussion?
Members of the council, this is, uh, the same process that we followed in, in the creation of every TIFF district. We're simply holding a meeting with representatives from each entity that would have received ad valorem taxes had we not created the TIFF. And this is to answer any questions that they may have, to explain the life of the TIFF, what happens when the TIFF is paid off. At, at that time, each of those tax recipients will start to, to, um, uh, receive the tax income generated from properties within the TIFF. Standard procedure required statutorily.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. X is a resolution authorized mayor to agreement between the City of Huntsville and the low bidder Reed Contracting Service, Inc. for Clinton Avenue Performing Arts Project, project number sixty-five fifteen SP thirty-three.
Some move? Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Doc Showers.
Mr. President, um, uh, I believe Kathy Martin wants to give us a description of this. This is the, uh, campus eight oh five, uh, project with the parking and the, uh, festival area, which is not an amphitheater, which is a flat green lawn area that will be out there. Um, got that, Steve? Uh, okay. Uh, this, uh, I'll let her describe it to you, but, uh, we have been, uh, kicking around in administration and with planning and with, um, uh, engineering, the idea, and it will, will come to council of naming this, uh, property, the, uh, SR Butler Green, uh, as, as in the lawn. We think it would be a good fitting move since, um, SR Butler has, uh, closed now, so, uh, we're looking at doing that. And you want to describe the project, Ms. Martin?
Yes, sir. It is an agreement with the low bidder Reed Contracting to begin construction of the four-acre public outdoor venue, which is approximately two acres of grass area and a hundred and seventy parking spaces, as well as a food truck driveway. And the grass area will contain a concrete pad approximately fifty-five hundred square feet.
Further discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, I just wanted to, uh, compliment y'all and express appreciation. Uh, as, as y'all know, uh, members of the neighborhoods nearby express concern about the amphitheater concept that had been mentioned, and this is much more neighborhood-friendly. And, uh, again, as we've said before, I think it's gonna be a great shot in the arm for that neighborhood area. And, uh, the fact that it's, uh, it's gonna, not gonna be an amphitheater, I think, um, uh, is a very good response.
It is. Ms. Martin, is it, what is it, a festival area or a park area?
We...
It's non-amphitheater. We got it. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have one legal department item transaction. We have a utility and drainage easement, uh, deed for acceptance. Chair moves for approval? Second by Doc Showers. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Who wants, Mr. Cox, go first, please.
Uh, Jerry Cox, forty, twenty-nine, tail star circle. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, on that area then, there at the, um, uh, City Center, unless it's happened, uh, since Monday, uh, if, if the city still owns that property, it's, it's getting to look, uh, pretty hairy down there if we can...
It needs to, you're right.
Get some, uh, get some work done on that. Um, as the gentlewoman from District Three said, uh, there was a great event this week out at the Space and Rocket Center, the seventieth anniversary of the end of World War Two. Uh, was pleased to attend that. I want to, uh, uh, I guess, recognize, uh, Don Webster and Hemsy. They were there in, in force and, and the, the people in, in attendance, uh, you know, recognized that also. Uh, Tommy Brown had the, uh, handy ride, uh, buses out there in, in good service. That was, that was also recognized by the people, and, and the fire chief, he had a, had a lot of firemen out there. So, uh, the city did, uh, did well in, in supporting that. Uh, police chief, uh, and, and the, and the, uh, uh, policeman that was there also on that. It was a great event. Uh, probably be the last of those events. Uh, probably in five years of those four hundred and fifty, there probably will not be, uh, too many with us. Uh, the organization that I belong to, retired federal employees, uh, we've lost, uh, three World War Two veterans that were members of our organization, uh, just during this, just since the first of the month. So, uh, they're going, they're going fast. If you know one, take some time and, and, uh, and talk to them, understand some of the things that, uh, that went on. Also, I had the pleasure not long ago of attending the twentieth anniversary of Tut Fan. Uh, that was a great event. Uh, unfortunately, I didn't, didn't see any city people out, out there yet, but, uh, we need to, uh, always be in, be aware of these activities that's, uh, that's involving our, our veterans. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Reed?
Thank you. I appreciate it. Do we just get three minutes on the end of it, too?
Yes, ma'am.
That's not good. Anyway, I want, I don't understand why you didn't have a public hearing on City Center. That, to me, would have been really a good public hearing, so we'd ask some more questions. You know, we paid six-point-eight million for the Holiday Inn, remember? And I keep asking, how much does it appraise for now? How much does the Civic, how much does the Aquatic Center, Scruggs Center appraise for? None of you have a value in your head of what this property downtown is worth? Some of you go get a real estate license and make my mind free of wh- how much property we're giving away to a developer for ninety-nine years. You won't be here and I won't be here. You don't know what's gonna happen to it. And that's sad. Fifty years would have been long enough for you to have done that. Golly, do some common sense up here. I want to go back and say, uh, Mayor Battle, I do know that Mr. Mark Russell is on the historical board. When Mr. Peter Lowe made a notion to demolish it, the first time I understood Mr. Mark Russell seconded it, and those six sitting there just sit there. Last week, I'm sorry, he wasn't there, but, um, something needs to be done before another lawsuit's filed. I know when the historical board gets a lawsuit on them, you all have to pay the bill. They are set up through you. I may not be right, but I believe that's the way these things that you set up cost the taxpayers dollars. Here's thirty-four to forty-five of community development where it needed to be fixed up. All this man wants to do is tear it down. Can this be appealed back to you, or does it have to go to the federal courts, Justice Department, or Supreme Court? What do we have to do? How do we get back to do what we need to do with this house?
My understanding, it's already been to court, and then they brought it back to the city council. I, I, my understanding is it was not, uh, the person that brought it to court did not win, but, uh, I can't say that for sure.
So, does it have to come back, or do we have to go to Supreme Court? Our Department of Justice?
You have to ask, uh, the person that's there.
Mayor Battle, I'm asking you to step in and help us with the historical district on this one man's house. I can't do anything with the people you appointed, and they don't know what they're doing. I'm sorry. I'm a, I'm a suggestion on you appointees on the historical board.
Ms. Reed, that, that's not true. They're very...
Oh, that's, I did ask it, and I'm glad.
Yeah, they're very knowledgeable people that serve on that board, and then they do a, a great job. They really work hard.
I've watched them many years, sir.
Yeah, I have, too.
And sixty percent of the neighborhood has to sign it, not ninety percent. Uh, Governor Bentley being Saturday, I'll see if he knows anything about what's going on. Maybe y'all can talk to him. I can't get it down. Maybe y'all can. I know there'll be another lawsuit filed on you if you don't help, help with this.
Ms. Reed, this is...
Thank you.
Ms. Reed, this gets down to a district that has devoted to follow these guidelines, and these people in here are the representatives of that district, and they represent those guidelines. And if they feel like that, that is the way that we should represent those guidelines, you know, they're the duly representing, representatives of that area. You, you can't just over, overrun them just 'cause you don't feel like you like them.
Ms. Reed, your time's up, please.
I just want to...
Ms. Ms. Reed, your time's up. Mr. Day?
I'll give him the guidelines.
Ms. Reed, your time's up. Mr. Day?
Wiley Day, one oh one Meadow Glen Drive. Uh, two thousand and eleven, this great city council and mayor was gracious enough in giving us, uh, a resolution to have what we call an adult prom, a one-of-a-kind event. The whole concept is because there, Huntsville has one of the highest divorce rates in the nation. And my son had this epiphany to have an event that people had a great time at, and that was a prom. So, we have a prom we call People Recreating Old Memories, for those who had a wonderful time at their prom. And for those who did not have a great time, or perhaps did not attend the prom, we have People Removing Old Memories. We've had a great time at this event, and part of the proceeds from the event, we always identify a charity that we share with. This year, we have chosen, uh, Operation Stand Down. It is the charity that gives support to homeless veterans. Last year, you may recall, we did New Futures. It was an organization, a nonprofit, that provides services for families, homeless, to keep the family intact. What we give this event each year, and this year is, is September nineteenth at the Vodvron Civic Center. And I'd like to extend an invitation to all of the council persons, as well as the mayor, understand that you'll probably be out of the city, and to all of the community that may be watching us. It is September nineteenth, and for additional information, you may contact myself, uh, my son, Wiley Day Junior, two five six three four eight seven nine two nine. It is a wonderful event. Uh, the concept is, we want people who are divorced to recognize that that is not the end of life. We want to rejuvenate relationships. For those who are married, we want to strengthen the marital relationships, and we want single folks in this city to know that it's all right to marry. So, we certainly appreciate all of the support that you all can give, and this year would love to see the city, uh, take a, 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 a large part in this, uh, because we want to keep it here in the city. And matter of fact, there are other cities that have now requested us, so next year, we will be visiting another city. But we would like for, uh, our city to take a major part in and helping us to promote this event. When we look at articles about Huntsville as one of the greatest cities to come to live in, that's all over the country. But there's one part of, that we would like to at least work on to help strengthen, and we just believe that this great city and the great leaders that we have can help us get to the next level. So, we certainly appreciate your time.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Ms. Culver?
Just to kind of comment on what Mr. Day has said. I've been there, I think, each year that you all have done that, and you have done it exceedingly well. I certainly had some memories that I wanted to recapture and other memories I wanted to forget, but it worked well for me, and I'm looking forward to coming back again. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Councilmembers? Where, Jerem?